Good evening. I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, February 5th, 2019. Is there anybody here that would like to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, thank you. No minutes?
Correct.
Before we get to any of the other stuff, I'd like to move the election of officers up to the top. Does anybody object to that?
No.
Okay. So, as I said last time, we're supposed to do this at the first full meeting of the year. This is as close as we get. I am not looking to step down, but I'm open if someone else wants to, but just...
Same.
Same.
Do we get to nominate yet?
Yeah, let's do a nomination for Chair.
I nominate Jesse Belcher-Tim as Chair of the East Hampton Planning Board.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
As a Vice Chair or something?
Similarly, I have no objection to Jim continuing on as Vice Chair unless someone else is interested, I would nominate him. All right, I nominate James Zarvis.
Unless someone else is interested in business.
Well, I mean, I don't want to pick sides yet.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Zarvis? Aye. All right, excellent. That out of the way.
We'll keep you guys now.
Well, it's only a one-year commitment, so... A and R, so first up is Thomas A. Cozial, Fort Hill Road. Is there someone here to speak to that? Want to come on up to the podium and just give us a quick overview of what's going on? Please.
Yeah, I'm Ron Cozial. My brother Tom wasn't able to make it tonight, so I'm just sitting in for him. He wants to subdivide a piece of property on Fort Hill Road, and I was told that you have the plan and everything.
We do have the plan and everything. Jeff, it looks pretty straightforward. There's frontage on both the lots and doesn't seem like there's any issues?
Correct.
Any questions or comments from Planning Department, or is this good?
My motion to endorse the creation of a new lot on Fort Hill Road for Thomas A. Cozial.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay. All right, which of those plans do we decide?
Also, is it possible for me to get two signed copies of that?
Yep, we'll get those to you.
Do I necessarily carry a magic pen?
No, I have a pen here. Maybe while I'm signing those, we can call up Nicholas Dupre for 30 Rear and 32 Lyman Street, or someone on his behalf to give us a brief overview of that A and R, please.
Sure. I'm Amanda Zbyskemp. I'm an attorney here in East Hampton. We're simply looking to reconfigure lot lines for... We didn't change anything as far as setbacks. We had a non-conforming lot that consisted of three different assessors, maps, and lots. We've already been to the ZBA and have our special permit because we can't make it more conforming, and we wanted to continue our non-conforming use. So this is more to clean up and make it, you know, as far as the lots go, a little bit cleaner.
And everyone had a chance to look at that?
Did.
Anything from the Planning Department's perspective? I know you've been dealing with this with the ZBA for a while, but...
Right, I mean, I think the fact that the zoning board of appeals has reviewed this under a special permit is useful because there are some uses that are pre-existing non-conforming. So this is the Rayner Door property. So, in essence, the creation of the two lots allows the Rayner Door operation to continue and exist, and that's been approved by the zoning board of appeals, and then it creates a legitimate lot for the house that fronts on Lyman Street. So this is something that's been sort of a challenge for a couple of years, and this A and R, the division of the lots, resolves that. So the zoning board of appeals has approved the use configuration, and the building setbacks are not changing.
Okay.
And the lot line on that side, if there's a nonconformity, is not changing either. So, I give credit to the applicant for doing a lot of legwork in advance.
No questions here?
None here.
None here.
Motion to endorse for Nicholas Dupre reconfiguration of several existing lots per ZBA approval, 30 Rear and 32 Lyman Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right.
Is it possible to take the Mylar this evening, or do I need to pick it up tomorrow?
Yeah, just wait, like... Everyone will just bear with us a little bit. There's some signatures required, and it's just a task that takes a little bit of time.
Yes, I recorded it.
And a copy?
And a copy.
You said something for pull. Play the thing again. There you go. Yes. Going to two? I hope we got enough. All right, moving right along. Continued public hearing for the Verbis Urb LLC, 74 Cottage Street. Someone want to come on up to the podium and update us on where we are?
My name is William Hartley, and I am renting 74 Cottage Street for an adult-use cannabis shop. This is the third time that we've met the Board regarding this special permit. Initially, we wanted to keep the plan dynamic and base it upon what the environment looked like at the time of our opening, how many stores there were, how were there still queues and so forth. It became clear in our last meeting with the Board that the Board wants a locked and loaded plan now, and that is what we're giving you. I will give an overview of four topics that the Board wanted us to address, and Steve will provide more detail. Noah, the architect, and Brian, the security expert, are here for questions. First, the first and probably the easiest issue was the issue of the waste disposal. This is not new. This is a requirement in the cannabis statutes. We had always planned to dispose of cannabis waste via a cultivator. We now have proof of that in a signed agreement with Green Gold, which is included in your packet. Secondly, the Board asked for a visual display of customers queuing inside of the building. Noah has done that. Noah is here tonight to address questions that might arise. Noah has done similar work for Insa. Third, the opening plan. Steve's opening plan will require us to meet with the police chief and town officials at specific intervals before and after opening. Fourth, external queuing and outdoor lines. Our answer is, there will be no lines. There will be no lines. All customers must have an appointment to enter the premises. There will be no loitering. Chief Alberti has asked for special language in this plan, which we have provided. The language states that anyone that continues to loiter after being asked to leave will be kicked out of the queue and not allowed to enter. If loitering continues, we will call the police. These appointments will be managed by a robust software system called Qless. We provided you with copies of our agreement with Qless. This is the same system utilized by the Fall River Retail Store, Northeast Alternatives. The queue can be entered through our website. The customer can be appended to the end of the queue or pick a specific time outside of the existing queue. The queue can be entered via free mobile app from Qless. The queue can be entered via phone by dialing a specific code like 71317. The software verifies the appointment with an email or text. The software tells the customer when it is time for them to come to the store. If someone gets into the queue and, for instance, is eating at Beany's and decides that they want to have dessert and an after-dinner cocktail and that they'll miss their appointment, the software allows them to enter an M to move them back in the queue. Once we have secured the special permit, Karima and I will undergo training on this system. Speaking of Karima, Karima is a resident of East Hampton and our first hire. Karima is a graduate from Dartmouth. She has an MBA from UMass. She is well-known in the cannabis industry and previously worked for NEDA. Karima is a pioneer on the social consumption front, and should she find an opportunity to open her own social consumption venue, I am supportive of that. However, there are incentives in her employment agreement for Karima to stay long-term. One of Karima's many responsibilities will be to manage the Good Neighbor Policy initiative that Steve will outline. Thank you for your time. Steve will speak next and provide more detail.
Can I just toss in one quick question?
Yes.
I just want to make sure you didn't just give us the code accidentally.
We know one thing it won't be now.
Somebody, please continue.
Good evening again. Thank you for having us. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of color as to some of these plans. Bill, obviously, the waste management we've gone through. I wanted to get to the opening plan. So, if you go through the plan, we're going to have meetings prior to with city officials and any other officials that, you know, whoever the city chooses to be part of this conversation, assuming it's going to be the Police Department, Police Chief, or a member of the Police Department, Planning, the Mayor's Office, City Council, to make sure that we address everything prior to and as we move forward for this. So, we've given you a concrete plan here that we will abide by. If requested by the city or by this group that we're going to be meeting with to amend it or to make changes to it, we will. We are dedicated to making this as smooth of a opening as we can, and we think by the time that opening happens, the industry is going to have normalized a bit to the point where we're not going to have the issues that everybody's seeing now, and I shouldn't say everybody, that some are seeing now. We modeled our... At first, we're going to model our queuing or appointment-only by, which was very successful. Bill has gone out extra steps to go with Qless. Qless is a robust queuing system that can allow, you know, certain blocks of time, certain amount of people to enter there and to come in, and so we can mandate who's going to be allowed into our facility at any time. So, a customer will come up. If they're in the Qless system, they will have their code on their phone, or they could print out an email confirmation. That's the first thing that will be asked of the, other than their ID, that person. If they don't have this, they'll kindly be told that they cannot come in unless they're in the queue. They'll be given instructions how they can enter the queue, and we'll give them some sort of pamphlet or paperwork on how our queuing system works. Part of this is educating the consumers who are going to be coming to the Verbis Urb as to our process, and it's not going to be just with this handout. It's going to be on our website. It's going to be through social media. We're going to try and notify everybody we can on how this is going to roll out. Part of that notification is also going to be where parking, allowable parking is. We will have a map there that'll show the allowable parking. We will give warnings that if they park anywhere else, there's consequences of ticketing, towing, you know, all of that. So, we will show them exactly, you know, where they can park if they're somewhere else, you know, it's, you know, they have the consequences. One of the other consequences, which is part of this opening plan, is our Good Neighbor Plan. So, our Good Neighbor Plan is for the company and our consumers. Our customers are going to come here. They're going to be notified of certain things that they cannot do, and they're conduct here, and if they violate those, they're not going to be served now, possibly in the future. And those include, you know, being disorderly, public consumption of marijuana, being rude to neighbors, anything like that, loitering outside where, you know, bold-faced, underlined, exclamation point at the end, we're not going to allow loitering. If they go outside and they're standing around, they have two choices. They can, you know, move on, enter our queuing system the correct way, or if they stay there, they're not going to get served. So, we're going to hold that very tight, that plan, the whole Good Neighbor Plan, but that's going to be explicit in there. We want to be very complimentary to the neighborhood. We hope to be a driver to the neighborhood, where people will come to our location, visit other locations, spend their good money here in East Hampton, and, you know, bolster the business and not be a negative impact, and we don't think we will. We've put a lot of thought into this queuing plan. We came up with a bunch of ideas. Bill was the one that actually found Qless. We looked into it, and it kind of hit everything we're looking to do. So that's the basis for our queuing. Now, on top of the opening plan, police details are going to be hired, paid by the Verbis Urb, and that discretion is going to be left up to the Police Department on when he thinks, you know, the police details are not needed or what hours they're needed, and the number of police officers are needed. So, that is one thing, you know, we're telling you right now, we will abide by his recommendations. We've met with him, you know, he's... I believe he's happy with that, and that's going to be a big part of, you know, mandating at least at first, this no-loitering and keeping people moving in that area.
Can I ask a quick question about the Qless program?
Sure.
If somebody shows up and they didn't know this, right?
Sure.
They didn't get the heads up, and I just walk to the door and I say, and you say, "You can't come in, you're not on the reservation system." Is it as simple as me walking back to my car on my smartphone and getting the list?
Maybe.
Okay.
Yes, if there's an open queue, they can do that.
If there's an open spot, okay.
What we're planning to give them is a little card.
Yep.
You know, this is how to, you know, get queued into the Verbis Urb, and, you know, we'll just say, "Hey, sorry, you didn't know about this, but this is how you're going to do it." And if, you know, and we can't have people standing outside, you know, punching on their phones. They're going to have to move on, but yeah, it could be as simple as that.
Okay. So they're not... It's not going to be a situation where they have to sit, it may encourage loitering, right?
Right.
Where you can't get in, even though there's open spots, you've got to wait, and...
Right.
So you can... You should be able to pull that up, assuming there are open spots.
Yes.
And get yourself in the queue that way.
And that means if there is an open spot, that person will be put on the list and then be allowed to go in.
That's correct.
If they do it electronically, you can't just say it to the guy at the door.
Right. It's got to be done electronically.
Jesse's point, I'm sorry, I just want to toss in about that it might encourage loitering, because, you know, "Oh, I didn't have it, I didn't know. Sure, I can do this right now. I could see myself as the kind of person that might..." "I'm just going to do this on my phone right now, then I'd be loitering." It would seem to me that it would be wise to develop relationships with some of the neighboring businesses to, you know, I mean, that's a great opportunity. You've got places right around.
That is, and...
Send them over to them.
And Bill actually has reached out to many of the neighboring businesses. You know, there's a lot...
And Karima.
And Karima, I'm sorry. And there's a lot of opportunity there to help them, you know, whether it's coupons, whether it's just, you know, "Hey, you know, so-and-so's got a good menu over here," or "Why don't you go down for an ice cream over here?" Yes, it does have that, but we will, you know, in a nice way, say, you know, "You can't sit here and queue right here in front of our doorway, but if you want to take a walk and visit one of our, you know, businesses down here and come back once you're queued, we'll certainly take you in."
That was a good question.
Another part of the opening is going to be our express pre-order. That can also be done through the Qless system and our website. So, that's worked well with many of the other retailers that are open now, and we think that's going to continue on, where they can view our menu, go in there and pick the products they want, queue when they're going to show up, and pick up those items. And again, they're still going to be inside that queuing system, but their transaction's going to be ready and waiting for them, and that transaction will take, you know, a fraction of the time.
Does that include POS online?
We can't do POS online right now, but, you know, if that opportunity comes available, yes, we would.
So theoretically, the best thing to do would be make an appointment on Monday to come in on Thursday to, you know...
That's what... That's the message we're going to put out there, and we are seeing in the queuing systems that there's been a 40, sometimes 50 percent no-show rate. So, we've taken that into account. The queuing numbers we have in here are what we can handle, and we know it's going to be less than that. So, as time goes on, we're going to evaluate those, and part of what we'd like to do is meet with the Board or the city officials to revisit this, and part of our opening plan is to revisit, you know, timely after our opening and, you know, just after action review. What went wrong? What went right? What do we need to change? Do we adjust our queuing? That's all decisions that'll be made.
So what we've done in the past with Insa, and I think would make sense here, is we've sort of made this initial plan, and I think for Insa, we did it for 90 days, with the idea being, this is what you're going to do for 90 days. It's going to be the electronic queuing. It's going to be police details at the police chief's discretion, you know, that sort of stuff, and then have you come back after the 90 days to the Planning Board, and we can... And we will name people, the Planning Department, the Chief of Police, you folks as far as your business, and maybe it's, "Boy, things are still going crazy. Let's keep it at this for another 90 days," or maybe it's, you know, "It's calmed down a lot, and the market has calmed down, and maybe we can try a 90-day period of foot traffic," or, you know, "I don't know what will happen after that 90 days, and we haven't gotten there yet with Insa even after they opened," but I think that's exactly the idea, at least for the first, you know, 90, 180 days at least, that we're sort of thinking three-month chunks and going through sort of to see what hap... Because I think you're right. I mean, we... It could be... It could be anything. I mean, I don't really think we know what the market will be like and how it'll respond, especially in a place like this where the parking is an issue, but there's the potential for foot traffic that I think could be either a real boon for you guys or a real problem for the town, right? So like, I think weighing those things and hearing in those follow-up hearings from you folks and the Chief of Police and the Planning Department and whoever else, including neighbors, that that would be really... That's how I imagine this going, sort of like we've done with Insa.
Yeah, and I think that's a smart move, and we certainly would not be opposed to that. We'd actually welcome that to do that.
Well, my question is, you were talking about no-shows and the percentages. How will you deal with the no-shows? Will their name come up and say, "John Smith is a no-show," and all of a sudden, he comes back on the list, and then all of a sudden, he's a no-show again? What happens to him? Is he out?
Well, I'm sure we'll monitor that. You know, I don't think we're going to ban somebody...
You were talking a large amount of no-shows.
Right. So I don't think we're going to ban, you know, somebody for that. You know, we would probably reach out to them via email or text. You know, if they don't show, they're not going to be automatically queued to a new location. They would have to requeue themselves through our system.
Same system.
Right. So, you know, honestly, haven't addressed that. We haven't thought of that, but that's something that we would, if we had somebody who was queuing up, you know, every day and not showing up, yeah, we'd have an issue with that, but that's something we're going to have to deal with as the time comes.
No, I'm just worried about some poor guy who, like, wants to go in there and get stuck in traffic, or something happens at home and he couldn't get to you, and now he's listed as a no-show.
Well, that's the thing, too, is if, you know, if this is a rolling kind of thing, you know, there are going to be open spots in those queues, so if somebody shows up 20 minutes late, you know, it doesn't mean they have to drive back from where they're coming from. They can requeue and say, "Okay, I'm running late. Oh, we have a 5:10 block that's open. We'll go in for that."
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Like the dentist. But you're not going to get a $25 bill if you don't make your appointment to the Verbis Urb.
No, no, we're not finding...
Jim had a question first, I think, Jeff.
It's about what you just brought up, and I think it's a really interesting point, but I need to just kind of explore that and go down that road a little bit. We're talking about, this is the Planning Board. We issued special permit in this case. That's what you're seeking, and we have to deliver that special permit or not, but we can put conditions in. So there's this concept of a condition where we're requiring that you have an opening plan or a...
Operational plan, yeah.
Operations plan is better, and that it comes up for some interval of review, and that we're requiring that you maintain a current and approved operating plan, and in that, it means that you come back to, and we name a board. I guess we're naming ourselves in this case, as you define it, so that it comes back to us, and you must maintain approval, and then sort of at our discretion, we could approve with the condition that you come back for another approval in another interval determined at that time, or we don't approve, which I guess puts you in jeopardy of therefore complying with the special permit that was already granted, or we say we approve and there's no longer conditions. You're looking at, you know, this has gone on for long enough that it doesn't continue. And this is sort of a new function of the Planning Board? It's sort of a... It would be on our agenda as a, it's not a site plan approval, it's not a special permit.
Well, I think it would be a public hearing on the operations plan, because it would be, I mean, it's essentially, it's like in the nature of a modification, I think, but it's not modifying the actual permit, just the underlying operations plan. So towns do this. I think nightclubs is a scenario where people do this, like, often when there's like traffic and crowd issues or crime issues, things like that, where it's sort of... So you're right, so the special permit, in theory, we could vote on that tonight with this condition with the 90 days, and they would have a special permit that has a condition that you have, that you always have a valid approved operations plan. We approve it up to, you know, this plan, and then they could come back, and I think part of, I mean, it's constantly trying to weigh, how quickly do you want to give them the chance to come back and show changed conditions while also not wanting them to have to deal with the hassle of coming in too regularly? So, I mean, we could approve this operations plan for a year, but I think they're hopeful that it's going to, you know, the hectic... The hectic nature will die down, and they'll be able to do more traditional foot traffic. So, I think, I mean, to me, the 90 days is just what we did with Insa, but, I mean, I would, I mean, if they thought it was going to be longer and they wanted to say, "Let's do six months and then come back," I mean, I don't think I would be opposed to that. I don't think, less than 90 days probably makes much sense, just because I don't think it's going to really change, but...
Do you have a preference on that?
Yeah, we don't mind coming in and reporting and coming back, so, you know, 60 days would actually be a good starting measure for us that we'd like to start with, and then we could do 60 days after that, and just to see where we are, because we think, you know, we're going to have that baseline of data after 60 days on where we are, what we're seeing. Are we having a lot of cancellations or no-shows? Are we not? How many open queues are left open? You know, can we take in more people? And I think after 60 days, we'll definitely have that, those data points.
And remind me again what your timeline is for when you think you'd be able to open?
We're thinking, you know, if we got special permit tonight, building permits, design, build-out, if all stars aligned, you know, I'm thinking May, more likely June.
Okay.
That's my thought. Bill might have other thoughts, but, you know, just from what I've seen so far and those timelines, you know, I'm thinking May.
Let me add one piece. I just feel like this needs a little bit of thought, and I like this. I think we're of like-minded, but in terms of when it comes before us again for that review, you mentioned open hearing again. Open hearing means notice to a butters. Who's paying for that? There's no fee for this kind of thing. There is, there's issues that need to be discussed in terms of the logistics of how this works, and not only that, but when they come back, what are our criteria for success and what aren't? We don't have a guide.
Well, I mean, it's literally going to be the same considerations for this operations plan, so I think it will be, the new information will be what we're hearing from them from their business level, sort of how swamped they are. We're hearing from neighbors as far as what they're seeing on the street, what we hear from the Planning Department, what we hear from the police chief. So we can take all that in, and it'll be just like the considerations we have right now in what we're going to do in drafting an operations plan and what we did with Insa. It'll just be...
I agree. We're on the same page. We know how to do it, but what if a new Planning Board comes? I just feel like this needs to be codified, just putting it out there.
Yeah, Jeff, there's a way, there's a way to work on the mechanics of it.
Before we get too far, one of the questions I had for the applicant was, in the revised materials in your, the opening plan, did you have a duration that you had wanted to keep the reservation-only system in place? Is there something in here that dictates how long you were envisioning that going? Because I think that that's kind of one of the things that, you know, this Board would have input, would like, I think the idea is that the Board would like to have input on understanding when or if you drop the reservation-only system.
First of all, I'd like to always have the reservation system.
Right.
But at some point, we would...
Yeah.
So, we would always keep the reservation system, maybe not that exact system, but a reservation system.
So that's the Qless.
Right, now it is. Leafly also has a queuing system. It's not as robust, and at some time, we may not need it as robust as this one, but we will always have an appointment-reservation system. At some point, we would like to have walk-ins, and I think the interval that you gentlemen
First of all, I'd like to always have the reservation system.
Right.
But at some point-
We have to do that.
Yeah.
So, so we would always keep the reservation system, maybe not that exact system, but a reservation system.
So that's the queue list?
Right, now it is. Leafly also has a queuing system. It's not as robust, and at some time, we may not need it as robust as this one. But we will always have a, an appointment reservation system. At some point, we would like to have walk-ins, and I think the interval that you gentlemen were talking about was 60 or 90 days. We would probably ask for that if things were going well, but it's up to you guys. I mean, we, we hope to do it as soon as possible, but the reality is, it's, it's not in our hands. You guys need to-
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea. I mean, I think like, as of today, I, I am only comfortable with sort of exclusively the online reservation system.
Yeah.
In, if you open May 1st, and in July 1st, you come back, I don't know what the facts on the ground will be. It may be that everything has dissipated, and it's easier to do that, and we can talk about that. I, I certainly don't know. But I, I think that that's the kind of thing that we would, I mean, to the extent we would hear about what is happening on the ground, we'd also hear about what changes they would propose, and we can get feedback, you know, from Chief Alberti and, and other people involved, as sort of what they think about the changes, and we'll have to evaluate that.
Great. You brought up the walk-ins. Do you have a preference to walk-ins?
No, I just think that if you just have reservations only, there are some people that don't have cell phones. It's probably surprising, but there are.
Yes.
And I just think, there's, there would be more business if we allowed walk-ins, quite honestly.
I think-
Oh, I'll add a-
Harry?
Definitely Harry.
Okay, go, Harry. Under this, this queuing thing and everything else, how many people do you think are gonna be serving an hour, under, under, under your predictions going forward, the way they're sitting right now?
Do you wanna address that?
Sure.
Because he wrote it, actually.
So, so right now, we would queue up to 60 an hour? It would be-
All right, do I, do I probably have with that?
I think, I, I just tried going to one of the restaurants the other night down here, on a Friday night, and I couldn't find a parking spot on Cottage Street. So I can't even imagine, 60 people, an hour, pulling in and out of Cottage Street, or, in, in, you know, in this immediate area, to find a parking spot. I mean, even if you get people on the phone, and you have them, you know, you set up a timetable, say 6:00 or 6:15 or whatever, there's gonna be an awful lot of people trying to find parking spots, especially that many an hour. You're talking 60 an hour.
Yeah. That's the amount, that's the amount the queuing system would accept.
Well, you know, but if you imagine the cars that are trying to find parking spots on Cottage Street, in this immediate area, 60 an hour? I mean, I live like, a half a mile from Nene's, and I can't find a spot.
No, I, I understand.
I mean, I walk from, as a matter of fact, me and my wife walk from my house up to town, because we can't even find a parking spot up to town.
So, so the thinking behind it was, that's the maximum we would accept, where we're confident we could bring those people in, make the transaction, and get them out, at 10 per, every six minutes. With the 50%, 40 to 50%, call it a no-show rate, you know, we'd, we'd drop that down. You know, we, we don't think we're gonna be hitting this all the time. Granted, when we first opened, yes, we, we may be. And that's when it's, you know, these are the data points we're gonna have to collect over time. And unfortunately, you know, we, we don't know, you know, you know, with the parking situations, are people gonna, you know, drive through, see no parking, and move on to the next, you know, block here is, well, dispensary down the road, or are they gonna, you know, create a traffic hassle? That's why, you know, when we first opened, we're gonna have the police details. We're gonna be moving traffic along. And, and, you know, it's just a, unfortunately, it's a data point we have to capture before.
Well, I'm just trying to figure, I'm just trying to figure where all the cars are gonna go. You know, are you gonna have all these cars that are going Cottage Street, and they're gonna be, I mean, I don't know if they've been standing outside that, that area, you know, on any given night, it's just incredible, especially on the weekends.
I may be beating a dead horse, but 60 an hour, one a minute, you have enough people that, God forbid it does happen, you have that many coming? You have enough people-
We're bringing in 10 people at a time. We have five POS stations, with the typical transaction taking around five minutes. You know, the math makes sense. Granted, we don't think we're gonna get 10 every six minutes, we're gonna get-
Yeah, but plus, you have to know that the people who are coming through know what they want.
Right.
They're not gonna stop and say, oh, maybe I shouldn't have that. Now you're gonna hold up, and you, how does that work, if you have someone that's gonna hold up the line because they wanna make a change?
Well, it's not one line. It's, it's gonna be a queue line with five. So, so we're expecting, we're expecting that some transactions will take longer, some will take shorter. We have our express lines, so some of these transactions are gonna be very quick, moving through. And, you know, if there is a backup, we, we do have our waiting area where we can queue people, again, inside the facility. If we ever got to the point where, God forbid, you know, the systems went down and things like this, you know, we would, we would, you know, for lack of a better term, kick people out of the queue and say, we're sorry, you're gonna have to requeue, and you can't loiter out here when that happens, we apologize. But again, it's something we're gonna have to, you know, bring up, but, you know, Mr. Hartley, and, and I, and Karim, you know, we, we're dedicated to the, to the no-queuing outside, and we will, you know, if we have to, tell our customers, you know, you know, you can't hang out here, you know.
Yeah, so I'm-
Can I just say one, just one comment? So, this software allows for, if, if you're getting too busy, and you're not moving these people through fast enough, first of all, it's called, it's, it's artificial intelligence. Over time, it will learn that, but in the beginning, it will allow us to override it. And we can, and it will automatically send out notes to people and say, look, we're too busy right now, you're gonna have to go 20 minutes later. So it automatically, I mean, we'll have to tell it, but it will send out these messages.
So people will know that they're running late-
Yes.
And they'll be told that, so you don't have to leave, you're just gonna have to wait an extra 10 minutes or something.
Yes. And on the other side of it, if someone is running late, the software allows them to move to the end of the queue. So it goes, it can go both ways.
I'm kinda curious about the queuing inside, which, we, we talked about this last time, and we do have some drawings about how people are gonna fit in there, but I guess part of it is logistics. So if this is broken into, each hour is six 10-minute blocks, is that right?
Correct.
So if, if I'm in the 1:20 block, can I get in there before 1:20, or I literally can't come in the front door until 1:20?
If, if, yes, you can get in, you can queue up, if there's an open spot, or you can, you know, our front foyer, you could wait in there.
Okay, so the, so the security person at the door will literally be looking and saying, okay, you, you may be 20 minutes early for your spot, you can't get served yet, but you can wait in here, because we don't have too many people-
Right.
-already waiting for the hour.
As long as they're on, they have the queue-
They have the reservation.
And they have the confirmation, they'll be allowed in. But if we can't fit them in, and it would result in an outdoor queuing, they would be, you know, told they have to, you know, come back in there.
Come back when, when their window opens.
That's correct.
And, am I reading this right? Do, do you say that you can fit in the waiting room one person for every square foot?
No.
Okay.
One person per seven square feet.
Okay. That, that makes a little more sense. All right.
Actually, if I could give you an addendum to the occupancy numbers.
Sure.
That would be good, because I was very confused about that.
Yeah, it's, it's been a subject of confusion. The code is a bit unclear on these points, and there was confusion over the minimum numbers and the maximum numbers. Significant, of course. So this explains our maximum occupancy. I also have those plans printed out much larger, if you're interested.
I think these are okay, the way they are.
One per 60 square feet.
So-
So the total occupancy of the entire space is 49. Of that, you have seven people that work there.
I have a total possible occupants, 252.
That's the absolute maximum based on the door width.
Okay.
You'd get 252 people in that little building?
That's not, that's not the business line, okay.
That's not proposed.
Okay.
That's the maximum based on the door width, according to the code.
Okay.
The maximum, according to the floor area, is, you know, it gets raised to 252 based on, based on the door width, and that's not what the limiting factor is.
Okay.
Just to give you guys my reference.
Yep.
The maximum occupancy would be 49 people, and that would be a posted occupancy, and all of this is per section 1004 of the National-
And that, actually, can you just step to the podium, so we can record?
No, but I, registered architect.
So, does the 49, the occupancy of 49, that includes employees too?
It does.
Okay. Chris, you wanna jump in?
I, I would. So, on drawing A1.01, you have an occupancy by area table, and it says, of the, it, it basically adds up to 68 max occupants, but then you do say, to be limited to 49.
Right. So I wanna just explain that table, because I think it's caused perhaps more confusion than it's eliminated. So if you just say that there's an occupancy of 49 people, that's helpful to a point, but there's intervening architectural components between each of those spaces. So each of those spaces needs to be designed for a minimum amount of occupants as outlined in that occupancy by area plan. So what that diagram shows is the maximum amount of people that can be in each area.
Okay. So of the 49 total, you could conceivably have 47 in the red area, and then two behind the counter?
Yes.
Or something like that? Okay.
And it has to be proven in the architectural documents that everyone can fit everywhere, and, you know, get out safely. So that, that's the point there.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about, so if, if you, if you discussed the total occupancy of the space is 49, is there a subsequent calculation that you use per person to then potentially lower the 49 per space? So there was an ongoing discussion between the architect and the building inspector about the types of uses that are proposed in terms of the building code, which generate the calculation. Can you just give a recap of where you, where you read that?
Yeah, and so the, the addendum I just passed out kinda begins to spell this out, but it's, what was being read is a maximum limitation on the people that can be in the space, one per 60 square feet, is really the minimum that you design your egress components for, and then the maximum amount of people are either determined by limitations imposed on what's allowed by the use group, which is use group M, or the overall egress width that we're offering. So with two 36-inch doors, we have a 72-inch wide egress, and we're allowed, each person, the, the calculations according to the code say that each per, you multiply the amount of occupants by .2 inches to determine your egress width. If your egress width is limited, you divide by .2, and you get the maximum amount of occupants.
So it's, honestly, it's just a safety thing. So basically, it's, what you're saying is, if there was a fire, and this was a club, 252 people could get out of these two doors safely?
Well-
Is that what I'm, is that what you're basically, kind of?
No, not exactly, because then it does get limited by other factors.
All the other things that are built in the way. If it was an empty space with that door, 250 people could get out of there safely.
Well, hypothetically, but in that case, it would require sprinkler systems-
Yeah.
-panic hardware, all of the other stuff that would be customary in a place of assembly. If we wanna remain use group M, so that we don't need panic hardware, and sprinkler systems, and all of these very expensive things, we need to limit the occupancy to 49 people. Okay?
Okay.
So that's the limitation. I'm sorry, it's, I know it's really confusing, and this is why John and I had, had a conversation actually scheduled for yesterday, and then today, but he's actually quite ill, apparently. But, yes, it's a bit confusing.
Okay. So, the, the 60 people that could potentially be signed up for reservations within a given hour, only 49 of them would be allowed into the building, well, 49 less however many employees there are, at any given time.
Yes.
That's what the building occupancy is, right? So it-
Yeah, exactly.
So, so if you look, if you cap it at 49, and you've got nine employees, you can, no matter how many people show up with reservations, you can only let 40 of them in, and then you're turning them away to come back when they get to their block of time, I guess.
That's assuming that the people that are scheduled for 12:50 show up at 12.
Right, right.
Okay. I see that you have the flow plan in here.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, and that one is particularly difficult to read on those plans. I do recommend that you take the third page of this, so you can see that more clearly. Pardon me for stepping away from the microphone.
Anyone that wants to come see.
So the, so they, so the person that's in a wheelchair that comes through, how do they get in, how do they get to the end payment, point of sale location with all of the obstacles in the way? Is there a clear path?
All those stanchions are movable.
Okay, the stanchions are movable, they go through one of the doors or both, are handicap accessible?
Yep.
Okay.
All doors, all egress, and a vacuum.
The entire pathway around the stanchions in the front area are all-
For AAB.
Okay.
And ADA.
Okay.
I guess this is for one of you gentlemen. The Alternative Therapy Group, the group in Salem, do you know what they're doing as far as how they're breaking down their reservation slots, and how many people can be there, that kinda stuff?
I don't know if it's been amended.
Yeah.
But I think it was, you know, and, you know, can't quote me on this, but I think it was around 80 per hour.
Okay.
And then they may have gone up, you know, with the, you know, they're also doing a revisit. I'm not sure when that is, if that's happened or whatnot.
Okay.
Okay. The free plan that we've been discussing is, there's a letter from the police chief.
Yeah, I was gonna do emails and letters, actually.
All right, sorry, I just thought it was-
I'll, I'll do that now, so I can work on my public reading. So, first of all, there's, we received an email from Tom Peak, who's one of the city councilors here. I'm gonna read these shorter emails, because they're easier to read, they'll pass around. Jeff, I hope you're well, I won't be able to make it to tonight's hearing, but since the matter concerning the Verba Zurb does fall on Cottage Street in precinct three, I wanted to share my thoughts, and hope that you could pass them on to the planning board. First of all, I fully understand that a lot of people in my precinct have concerns about this, and particularly in light of the tragic accident which occurred so recently on Cottage Street. I think concerns about how this busy space is being used are legitimate and need to be discussed. That said, any new business on Cottage Street is going to meet new visitors, and that's going to have impacts on parking, traffic, et cetera. To me, those impacts are preferable to an empty storefront. Busy, vibrant downtowns can be hectic and difficult to drive through, but there are a lot of communities that would love to have that instead of what they have. When we wrote our recreational cannabis ordinance, we deliberately allowed the downtown business district as a place where cannabis establishments could be located. Part of my support for that was based on expanding the types of businesses that could locate in our downtown. Cottage Street isn't an ideal fit for every kind of cannabis establishment, but I think that with enough care, a small business like this could actually fit in well, among the other businesses in the area. If the council and the planning board hadn't identified the downtown business district as a potentially promising site for these sorts of businesses, there would have been no need for the lengthy and at times contentious debate that we had around school buffers. I want to thank the planning board for all the hard work they do. I know that many of the board's members, like myself, live within walking distance of Cottage Street, and treasure this part of East Hampton like I do. I have complete confidence in their ability to work with the applicant and the community to craft an arrangement that allows a business like this to thrive on Cottage Street while mitigating any externalities that might concern other members of our community. We also received an email from Juliette Moores, who says, hello, I left a message, but here's an email as well. I'm not sure who to contact, but I have many concerns about the request for the pot shop at 74 Cottage Street. Being a mom, owner, operator at the adjacent address, 76 Cottage Street Valley Art Supplies, I have a lot of questions. I would have asked the prospective business owner, but they have yet to meet, but I have yet to meet him. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the meeting a couple of weeks ago, because I was at my son's basketball practice. I have two elementary school kids that come to work with me every day after school, and many times on the weekends. They actually grew up in this art store, and are not going anywhere. I've talked to many people with many worries about the placement of the pot shop at 74 Cottage Street, but I'm also worried about my business myself, but most of all, my children smell marijuana. People who, who work in these dispensaries say the smell permeates everything. My family, my kids should not have to smell, or smell like marijuana. I do have other concerns. Can you tell me who I can talk to about when the next public meeting is? I'm all for business growth, I just don't think 74 Cottage Street is the best fit for the proposed business.
Just out of curiosity, do we know if anyone responded to her as to when this, oh, oh, hi, there you are.
Hi, that's me.
Thank you.
I actually met, gosh, I met Bill today, and I had a lot of questions answered.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
All right, I've, I've got one more email, and then a letter, and then, we are gonna open it up to public comment in a minute, all right? This is from Joshua Gaystel. I live on Cherry Street, just a stone's throw from Cottage Street in East Hampton. I'm writing in full enthusiastic support of a retail cannabis establishment on Cottage Street. I love Cottage Street, and my family and I take regular walks downtown to visit the local shops and the pond. I understand that some retail cannabis businesses are approaching the point of approval denial. I wanted to say, as an East Hampton homeowner, I think having a retail cannabis store on Cottage Street is a great idea for the city, and I fully support it. Considering the amount of bars that sell physically addictive substance on Cottage Street, it seems only fair that a similar establishment for non-addictive cannabis be given the same opportunity. I truly believe that giving into the pressure of old prejudices created by deliberately misleading fear campaigns of the past would fear campaigns of the past would be a mistake for our city and an embarrassing one. Please do all that you can to ensure that cannabis retail establishments get fair treatment in our city, and we can all enjoy the benefits of these burgeoning business opportunities together." And then finally, received a letter from Chief Alberti, to whom I concern. "Today, I received the final submission of supplemental materials for the Verbos Erb LLC. This material is from a recent follow-up meeting regarding the project proposal at seventy-four Cottage Street in East Hampton, Mass. We again discussed many of the potential challenges that may be associated with opening this type of business in our downtown district, i.e. parking, line queuing, traffic patterns, congestion, et cetera. This new plan should mitigate some of our initial concerns, as it now includes reservation-only, virtual line queuing, customer email confirmation, a loitering policy, and police details that will be determined by the chief of police. Moreover, any time after the opening, I will reserve the right to keep police details on the property as I deem necessary for traffic, security, and public safety. This is similar to what we have done in the past for other-like businesses, as this process is very fluid. This project is in its very beginning stages, and we will continue to monitor and recommend changes as we see necessary. The CCC will require a final sign-off by me before the Verbos Erb is allowed to open. The East Hampton Police Department will continually make recommendations to the Verbos Erb with regard to security as the project moves forward."
There was one more-
There was one other one that we received from David Siak, who actually spoke at the last hearing, so I think he said what he had done, but he was the gentleman who-
Didn't we read that at the last meeting, though? Is that, when is that dated?
We had it for the last meeting, we didn't read it out loud, but he spoke, he's the owner, he's the landlord at Two and Four Pine Street, and spoke at that one. So, does anybody on the board have any more questions before we open this up?
Did you actually finish your presentation? Were you in the middle of it?
Yeah, I think I did. Yeah, we got everything out.
I'm gonna give this back to you. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thanks. Don't wanna lose that. All right, anybody here from the public who has any comments, questions, please come on up. Please make sure you're, just give us your name and address, so we can get it down in the minutes, too. Thanks.
My name is Greg Delojo, I live at Eight Pine Street. I was at the hearing two times ago, and I have to say that the plans sound a lot better now than they did then, but I do have concerns. I live at Eight Pine Street, I live on the block, you know, one block away from the proposed store, and that area has bad parking problems as it is, and I would say that many evenings, in the summertime, five evenings, you know, now, a couple evenings a week, there are cars parked along Pine Street from Orchard Street up to Cottage Street, all the way down Orchard Street, and it makes for a very dangerous driving in the evening, because it essentially makes Cottage, or Pine Street, a one-lane road. The thing, I guess I have two questions. One is, is this a commitment to have no external lines? Is that something that they are promising that they will never have, and if they do, I call the police? And also, I would like to hear what the parking plan is, because, you know, people talked about a parking plan, but these gentlemen actually didn't give any good answers about where people were going to park when Mr. Schuman was asking his questions, and makes a big difference. I think what's gonna happen is that essentially Pine Street will get turned into a one-lane road from Cottage Street and beyond, and it makes for dangerous, just trying to get off of Cottage Street onto Pine Street right now is a struggle. We have people, you know, getting agitated because, you know, they're getting held up, trucks are speeding into the parking lot of Two and Four Pine Street to sort of go in. And so I think that it's important that we know where are people gonna park for this? Thirty people an hour, twenty people an hour? My suspicion is, they aren't gonna go parking here, here in the town lot. They're gonna be trying to park right there, and it makes for considerable difficulties. During the day, there are trucks, many, many trucks, loading things for the restaurants and the bars and other businesses here. I can't imagine having, you know, thirty people parked and then trying to do that as well. I don't think it will be possible. So, I think that there needs to be some sort of accommodations, or, I mean, make it so there's no parking for a block off of Cottage Street. Try to make it so, you know, people can safely get on or off of Cottage Street, and really make sure that there is no disturbance. So, I guess my two questions are, is that an absolute guarantee, no lines outside? And two, I would like to know, what is the parking plan?
Do you wanna respond to that?
So, we're not gonna queue customers outside. If customers are outside and they violate our internal no-loydering policy, we're not gonna serve them now or in the future. Obviously, if they continue to loiter and they're causing a public nuisance disturbance blocking the sidewalk, we'll notify the police department. At first, we're gonna have police officers there. We also plan on continuing police details even after that, you know, high-volume nights, maybe Friday, Saturday, you know, weekend days, you know, that's, you know, something we're gonna take up with the police department, but we do not plan on queuing any of our customers outside. As far as parking, you know, we are gonna message, to the extent possible, to our consumers where the allowable parking is. We're gonna give them maps, we're gonna let them know the consequences of parking in areas that are not approved or public parking, and that's also part of our good neighbor policy. If somebody's taking up somebody else's parking space, violation there, you know, that could, you know, trigger us not serving them anymore. So, that's, you know, to the extent that we can right now, we still are looking for alternate parking. We're trying very, very hard to find that, and we'll continue that. It makes good business sense to us, it makes it better for the neighborhood to be able to put our customers in places, and we will continue to move forward on that.
Have you ever tried, and I know, I can't remember, maybe one of you, there was one state where, in the city, they were busing? They would bus to this parking area, or they would meet on a, like, on a school ground, oh, school, freaking out. How about, how about a parking lot? They would meet there, and then a bus would pick them up and bring them. That way, it would alleviate some of the parking. Did it alleviate all of it? I didn't read the whole thing, but I got a feeling that it would help.
It would, and we have looked into that, we've reached out to several property owners here, here in the city, to see if we could use their parking, you know, at least even on a short-term basis to shuttle. We didn't have any takers, we'll still consider that moving forward, but right now, that, you know, we can incorporate that into our plan right now.
That was just something to throw out there.
Yeah, Jeff. So, there, I know there's other public comment, I mean, I think that there is a larger discussion, you know, to happen soon about Cottage Street in general, so I think, while this is a very specific case, there are other, you know, vacant shops on Cottage Street that are going to be occupied by other establishments that are not subject to this kind of scrutiny, so there is a point when the planning board does have to make sure that the uses are being treated equally to the extent that makes sense, so that hasn't been quite determined yet. I think that there is a potential opportunity to do messaging that there is safe, reliable, and close parking in this parking lot. There's a, there's something happening on Cottage Street that is gonna be explored through a planning grant, but if, on a busy night, if you go up Cottage Street, all the parking is taken, and it's on the side streets, but this lot is pretty much empty, and so I think the city has some work to do on its own to really push people to this lot, and, you know, one of the general planning concepts out there is, if you look at Amherst or Northampton, they struggle with being able to say there's safe and reliable and available parking, but we have that. So we have a totally underutilized lot here, so you have an opportunity somehow to message your customers to park here and walk four-hundred feet up to your shop.
Literally two blocks.
I think that, right. So, it doesn't solve necessarily the concerns or questions about whether there's a potential impact on Pine Street. I think that that's something that is a bigger discussion with the city, the police department, and, you know, emergency, you know, management about whether there's a, whether there's some need to look at that parking restriction, so that's not gonna necessarily-
And city council, because that's not, we don't have the authority to make Pine Street no parking, that's beyond our purview, so I don't know that that's, that's a bad idea, regardless of what happens with this project. I mean, I know that that can be a tough spot to park in, but that's something that would have to be handled by city council as far as the no parking part.
So some of the last discussions where there are some exemptions in our parking regulations for uses like this, so that's a reality that's in front of the planning board, I think that one of the previous discussions was that customers may find parking somewhere, and that's a bit of a reality, whether it's this business or Mission Cantina, it's what this owner can do when his customers are in front of his location and how he can manage his customers. That was one of the places where we boiled it down last time. That's not to negate the other issues that got raised about parking in general on Cottage Street, but-
Right, well, and I think that it's also, I mean, if we're talking about sort of setting the number of people per hour or block of time, I mean, I think that we're considering both where are the people gonna go and where are their cars gonna go, I mean, I think that those are two similar, it's two sides of the same coin, so I'm more pressed with where we're gonna put the actual people at the moment, but I think that that's, it's certainly something that we can take into account. Anybody else, comments, questions?
You don't? No, it's okay, you can look. They're used to hearing me.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Johnson. I own a business on Twenty-Six Cottage, I'm a resident, and I also work at the school, Maple School. So I have a couple of questions. One, you talk about the queuing, and then just, let's just say you do have sixty people come at one time. What's the timeframe? So, you, so, you know, you have sixty people kind of entering, each one has to, before they hit into your building, they have to have their license looked at? You're going to have a buildup of people on the street, so how do, well, you can tell me after, but that's my concern question, is just best-case scenario, how do you move them? How quickly are you gonna move them through? And then the other question is, I really do believe that our parking is very inadequate, and I know that every business, some businesses might have like ten people a day, but the numbers you're talking about really concern me with all the other businesses that are on Cottage Street, because we would like our customers to be able to have parking as well, and it seems like you're really gonna be absorbing a lot of it, and very busy restaurants as well, and there's no fault to you, it's really a fault to the city, because in order to grow, to have this kind of a business on our street, we need to grow as a city, but it has to happen at the same time, in my beliefs, because I'm worried, and I'm also across the street from where that horrible accident was, and I risk my life every time I cross that street, even with the flags, it is very concerning. Again, we're bringing all of these people in, sixty people, like you said, an hour, if that was optimum. It's a lot of cars, it's a lot of traffic, and it's very dangerous, so that's, that's it. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do you wanna come up? I am curious about sort of what-
I wanna toss in before you do, and I think, you know, giving an opportunity to rebut is great, but I said this at the last meeting, and I just think it's worth reiterating, is that, you know, normally, we look at traffic plans, we get into the nitty-gritty of, you know, how many cars are passing per hour, what the impacts are gonna have, and we demand a plan. Our downtown business, this area is essentially grandfathered in, they don't have to follow traffic regulations, and as is true of your location as well. So we have to be very cautious in how we proceed with this. Again, at the end of the day, we're issuing a special permit, and we're trying to do it as legally as possible so that we, as a city, don't get sued for not abiding our own zoning. So I think everyone here, everyone here feels strongly that there is a problem in East Hampton, that it needs to go to our city council. I know the city council from personal discussions is having conversations about this. Jeff, you've talked about some things that is in the works, and we do have an underutilized lot, there's things that need to be done, maybe even bigger things. I've mentioned, you know, a rotary up by Maple and making it one-way going around Maple and coming one-way out so that we still keep traffic. Those all ideas, they're great ideas, but those are not conversations that we're having at this level, we can't, because it's in our zoning that they're grandfathered in, so we can't really tackle that. Jesse really touched on it a little bit here just a moment ago, saying, "Well, sort of by association, by focusing on the numbers of people that are there, we can get to the traffic a little bit, but we can't directly address the traffic." Our hands are tied. Jeff may have some off-the, you know, off-the-cuff notions of how to bypass that, but ultimately, you know, we need to follow the rules.
I'm gonna throw it right at you.
I mean, I think I would prefer to have the board continue with the public comments, and then we can figure out where we end up.
Yeah. Hold on before-
I did wanna hear-
Yeah, so I'm gonna give you folks a chance to respond, and I think that, I'm curious what she raised about sort of the people coming at once, I guess, if you can address sort of how you're gonna handle a large group, I mean, I think that you're probably right that sixty people aren't gonna show up, but if you're carding everybody at the door and twenty people show up, is that gonna happen quick enough where the next twenty who come in won't already be in line for the next one? So I guess how that process is gonna happen and how they're gonna end up there, that would be helpful.
Can I ask you a question? Can we talk about it as a six people? Because if that's what your queue control-
Okay, so sixty people would be coming in over, over an hour.
Okay.
So, every ten minutes, that's, every six minutes, that's ten people. So, they should get in and out of there pretty quickly. In other words, those ten people aren't still gonna be in there when the next, when the last ten people of the sixty are coming in.
I just had to go, every six minutes, there's six people. If you're doing sixty people in sixty minutes, it's-
Six a person a minute.
A person a minute. So you're doing yourself a disservice by saying ten people in six minutes, because that's sixty people in thirty-six minutes.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
My mind is going crazy.
It just can't hap-
It can happen, because it's not one, it's not one person handling sixty people, there's six stations, and that's what we gotta get into here.
Right, but so, I'm curious about the door, the entryway part, that's the part that-
So, if for some reason it goes slower than we antiz- Oh, at the door?
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're coming in in ten-minute intervals, I mean-
But so, just to clarify, so if I show up there at the front door, do I, am I showing my ID before I get let in the front door, or is it after I'm into that queuing area inside the front door that I'm showing my ID?
Okay, so to get, so to get into the front door, you do need to show your ID, you also need to show that you're in the queue.
Yep. So, so that process, so I guess if you open at noon on a Saturday, say, and the ten people that are there from twelve to ten window block are waiting for you to open up, and five people from the twelve-ten to twelve-twenty block, I don't think that's an unreasonable assumption. You've got fifteen people there waiting, so how long is it, is it taking you, do you think, to process each one of these people?
To get them in the door?
Yeah, literally just that entryway point.
Yes, seconds.
How long does it take to get into a bar?
Okay, so, well, so that's what we're trying to address, because there's, because the thing is, are you gonna get those fifteen people in before the next batch of people come? So that, I think that's what the concern is, is if there's large numbers. So, what you're telling me is that it's gonna literally be an ID check and checking them on a reservation system that you think will take a matter of seconds, and then they're inside the waiting area?
Yes, and if somehow we do get behind schedule, there aren't gonna be any queues outside. I mean, we've already talked about that. We will send out emails and say, "Look, we're sorry, but you're gonna have to come in ten minutes later."
And can I just clarify, there's not gonna be sixty people at the door at the same time, there can't physically be that, because you only allow forty-one in, assuming you have your seven employees.
But you may have ten people there every ten minutes waiting for the next minute, ten-minute block, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so the question is, how quickly can you process those ten?
That's the question.
To get them inside the door, and I think that's what the concern that was raised by the comment is, is even if you don't assume the sixty-at-once kind of scenario, I think people are probably gonna show up at least a little bit early for their window, especially in light of the fact that if they're late, they're out. So I think you can assume-
One thing I will say, though, if they're late, they can move back into the queue, they can put an M in this.
If there's spots, right?
This is one of the variables that, you know, as we continue to discuss this, but I think this is one of the variables, I had a note to throw out, whether ninety days is the right amount of time to let this experiment go, whether it be pulling it down to the first thirty days and having, you know, this might be a unique, a unique enough situation to, you know, I know that that's not necessarily agreeable to everybody, but to ensure that there's enough ability to change or modify the plan, if you threw out thirty days, for the first thirty days, to see how it's going, you know, one of the, it seems like one of the things that would be, the ability of the planning board to talk through with a revised plan is the number of people that you're scheduling per hour. So if, if over the first thirty days, the sixty, you know, people an hour is just not working, too many, then it would be, I think, within the ability of this board and this operating plan to reduce that number to make it accommodate the flow.
Or if it turns out alternately that it's not the same situation, it's July first, and the demand has dissipated, and you're able to envision this sort of like, that it may be able to revise the other way. I mean, Jeff's right, I think the, really the only variable, now that we're doing the all reservation system, is the number of people an hour. I mean, if we said six people an hour, each person gets a ten-minute interval, there will be no queuing problems, there'll be no parking, and there'll be no business to keep you guys alive.
There'll be no money to pay the employees.
Exactly, that's what I mean, there'll be no business. So like, that, that's the spectrum that we're operating on. I think the only problem with thirty days is literally the applicant, because I don't know how quickly they wanna be coming back here, but from our perspective, I mean, we But from our perspective, I mean, we can certainly.
He's requested sixty, so why not?
Okay, but can I ask one question? Do you, and we've asked this of other applicants, what is the actual, what is your estimate from the moment a person walks in to the moment the person leaves, how many minutes is that?
So when they make first contact with one of our associates, and we're gonna have at least one associate per POS, average would be a five-minute transaction.
So, but that's after they've been carded in front, waited in the queuing area and gone through the line to a register?
Five registers at five minutes will do ten people every six minutes. So again, we're queuing for six, for ten, we're not gonna get there. Just, you know, we, we know the no-show rate, we, we know the, the express line is gonna take some of those and move them out quicker. So we're very confident that the numbers we have right there, we will be able to move through the store to accommodate the next, you know, six to, you know, four to six, or, or six to eight, or, you know, the ten that, that are gonna come in.
We have any numbers on any of the, like on Netta or Inso, the, the timeframe it's taken to go in and out?
I've done my own market research, and it's not scientific, but it's about a five-minute transaction.
And the express pickup, is that, if I'm coming to pick up an order I place online, am I still in the reservation?
You're one of those queues.
I am, okay, it's not in addition to, it's, it's one of our spots.
So you're one of those ten, if you show up early, you know, and, and we don't have an open queue, then, then you're waiting till your time, you come in, that transaction is gonna be, you know, two to three minutes at most.
Yes.
How, how many people are you actually going to put in your queue for any given time? Like twelve noon, how many people are gonna be scheduled to show up?
From twelve noon to twelve-ten, or to twelve-oh-six, is going to be ten people that will be allowed to queue.
Okay.
Twelve to twelve-ten.
Twelve to twelve-ten, I'm sorry, yes.
It's ten. I really am, I'm getting red. So I've done my own research as well, and I think it's probably about, if it's dead, it's about five minutes, you're right. But if it's busy, it's about ten, because you've got a lot of people in there, you've got, you've got people waiting, you've got people queuing inside the red area, and then you've got, you know, so, so there is a variable there.
No, there is, but I'm saying with contact with that, with that sales associate is five minutes.
Yeah.
So there may be another five minutes where, because.
In the waiting room.
The other, the other ones are doing internal queuing also, sometimes external queuing, but my, that timeframe is their contact with the employee, picking their products, talking about things. Sometimes it takes two minutes, sometimes it takes seven.
Yeah.
But, you know, seeing about.
And you have how many point-of-sale stations?
We're going to have five point-of-sale stations.
Five point-of-sale stations. So say it takes an average of ten minutes for a person to get in and out, and you've got five stations, that's about fifty people maximum. Fifty, or, sorry, five people every ten minutes.
Thirty.
Every thirty minutes?
No, thirty people in an hour.
Thirty, that's thirty people in an hour. So that's what I'm wondering is really, well, then you've got, so, so say you can get, like, get those thirty people in and out, that still gives you people, plenty of people in the waiting room that are still queuing in. So I don't know if sixty's that unreasonable, to be honest with you, because you've got the thirty people that are getting through there, but you've also got the waiting area that's part of it. So it's not like you're wait, like, these, these five people go in and out in ten minutes, and then these next five people go in and out in ten minutes.
It's a constant flow.
Sixty's a good starter number, and we can review it when they come back.
I think also, also the key to the sixty is, assuming the number's accurate, the no-show number, right? That like, I think an actual sixty is probably pushing it, but if it isn't actually sixty, which it sounds like it's not going to be, then I think that's something that could work, certainly on a trial basis for the first phase, seems reasonable to me.
They'll adjust it on their own, because if it starts to become a problem, it violates the good neighbor plan that you put out.
Yeah, the police are coming.
Police are coming, it's exactly not the solution that you want. So all those catches on the end of it make sixty a viable number to start with, at which point we review it when you come back for your operations plan.
And I like the sixty days, because I think the sixty days is good, because we can get police data at that point, we can get feedback from the residents. We can, ourselves, I mean, we can walk by and see it ourselves.
Yeah.
And see what's going on.
Yes, sir.
I'd also just like to direct your attention to the queuing plan that's provided. And part of the reason everything's configured the way it is, is so that, yes, you have some people in the waiting area, those people are waiting to be taken into the sales floor. The line in the sales floor loops twice in front of the retail counter. The retail counter's gonna have everything on display in front of people. The idea is so that when it's actually busier, people move in quicker, not slower. They have an opportunity to review what's there before they speak to an associate. So that can cut the transaction time down to, you know, less than two minutes potentially.
And that's what happened in Colorado, too, there was a, the waiting area, but then you got let into the, what you, the holding area, whatever the red area is on your drawing. And there was a queue system in there, too, so you were waiting another few minutes, but you were out of the waiting area. And you were given a menu, so by the time, by the time you got to the actual bud tender, you knew exactly what you wanted.
Well, that's what Inso does, too, Inso's got the outside waiting and the inside waiting.
I'll point out that I designed that there, too.
All right, thank you.
So that makes it faster, all right.
Next up.
Next up.
You made it.
I made it. And I'm gonna go kind of in a different direction. Annette Segal, Mutter Street, I'm a crossing guard. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting. I was actually down in the safety committee meeting, because this is my big concern, is safety. But before I get into that is, what if I go in there and I haven't the slightest idea of what I want, and I wanna spend an hour talking to somebody? What happens? Because you're saying a ten-minute, you know, if I don't know anything, and I wanna say, well, maybe I want this, maybe I want that. So, I mean, I might not be the only one who does that, so that is gonna change that. But besides that, okay, the, the whole thing on the safety bit. The new businesses next to the butcher shop, all that whole little area. There, you know, I don't even care about parking anymore, I care about the people who just walk across the street. You know, they go to the tattoo store, they just walk across the street, they go to the butcher shop, they just walk across the street. Nothing against you, but I was watching a guy do that today. He parks by the little corner store, and he just walked in the middle of the road, in the middle of the day when there's so much traffic. And the same thing, and it's not, so it's not just, you know, your shop, it's everybody. So I don't care about parking anymore, it's like, what kind of plans, I mean, you can't change idiot people who just walk in the middle of the road. But something has to be done so that we can save people from just walking out in the middle. Major, major problem here. And that doesn't, like I said, doesn't even have anything to do with parking. It has the fact that this business hopefully will be a walking, you know, people will do more walking. And, you know, but again, it's like if they're, if they're late or if they're queued at a certain time, you know, are they gonna just walk around town, but just kind of walk across the street? But anyways, I'm just really, really, a really picky person on crosswalks and, you know, people who just randomly walk in the street. So that is my big concern. But yeah, the, the whole thing of the queuing thing, it's like, that's, that just came, thought came into my head, it's like, what if I just don't know what I want, and I wanna spend an hour in there, and the three people behind me wanna spend an hour in there? What, what can be done for that? So that has to be, you have to think of that, because I don't know myself.
I think they answered that already.
Yeah, that's why I missed the beginning, because I was.
What happened according to, well, it's still a good question, so don't get me wrong, it's a very, what happens according to them is that they get behind, their system automatically tells people that your appointment was pushed back. So the entire thing just gets pushed back so that they maintain the proper population of.
But what if the ten people who are in there spend an hour?
Then those poor people after them are just pushed.
Sitting and sitting.
And seeing, you know, what happens then, they're very angry.
That's their problem.
They're really angry, and they're gonna just wander the streets, go to the bar, drink.
Walk in the streets.
But yeah, that's my whole concern, is, is the walking people, and the way that they just disregard crosswalks and, and just wander all over the place.
All right, thank you very much. And you wanna jump up, please?
Welcome back.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kareem Marisk, and I'm gonna be working with Verbe Zerbe as their new director of operations. Regarding Annette's question, what happens if people take different times? That's a case you can see in Inso right now. Typically, it is a judgment thing in terms of crowd management, but if someone's starting to lag and really need an extra time, and you're in a situation in which you have a very crowded room or a long line, typically what they'll ask you to do is take a little bit more time to consider what their options are. At that point also, another staff member can join them, but they'll get funneled back into the waiting area to, to evaluate on that.
Okay.
And then they can come back into the purchase room.
Thanks. Sure.
Hi, my name is Cindy Bo. I live up, off Cottage Street. And I'm wondering if, you know, I have nothing against having a dispensary or a store in town. I would love it if you were using local stuff, I don't know if that's happening. But my concern with Annette and others is safety, considering Denise's death. And she was my friend, excuse me. And I'm wondering if there's something that you can do, you know, some of your customers won't be local, but if you were to send out some type of email that said, please respect this community that you're driving into, the speed limit on this road is twenty-five miles an hour, it should be less, but it's twenty-five miles an hour. Nobody does twenty-five miles an hour. But what I would like to see you guys do is try to help us with that, because semis go speeding down that street. When I put a flag out this past few weeks, I saw two people almost get hit. Because people are driving and they're just not paying attention, they are not paying attention. Right in the crosswalk where Denise was hit, somebody was coming down the street, I stood there with a flag and she was looking in the shops, wasn't even looking, and there's a crosswalk right there. And yes, it is a huge problem in this, in this community, and I think it's a problem everywhere. Streets are dangerous by design, they're not made for pedestrians, they're made for cars, and the cars are taking advantage of that. And we're gonna, if we're gonna have more people come into the city and we wanna have a vibrant downtown, then I think we need to, as a community, try to get, educate, educate the people, our customers, our community. I was speaking with the mayor, it's supposed to be that update, mayor will update, and I had said, you know, some people are gonna feel fine, they're too cool to pick up a flag and walk across the street with it. But what I ask is that everybody do it regardless of how you feel, because it's gonna help us as a community to become more aware, to know that we have people walking. So that is what I would like to see happen, is if, when you develop a customer base and you have emails, if you could spread the word to slow down, to use the crosswalks, to respect our city that we live in and that we walk every day. Thank you.
Thank you for the flags.
Please. Hello, my name's Wes Melzone, and I own seventy-four Cottage Street. I guess maybe it's a good opportunity to talk about my experience with Bill from a character perspective, and I think that this has some, some bearing on maybe his involvement in the community from a safety perspective and as a queuing perspective. My experience, this is only my experience, Bill has been, has honored every financial transaction and otherwise from the start of this. And I know that might not be a shock, but there hasn't been any issues. Bill and I have had many conversations regarding Cottage Street in East Hampton, what I think as a business owner and someone who's run their business out of that location for a year. And this has been an ongoing discussion, so this isn't just like, hey, I'm gonna dump a bunch of money on you, you're gonna accept it, and we're just gonna cross our fingers and hope we get a license. Which I appreciate as a business owner and in that location, who has also had proposals from other larger cannabis companies. I, as someone who, who really likes Cottage Street and wants to see it thrive, and someone who's been financially a part of other businesses opening on Cottage Street, and a big proponent of the accepting nature of, of East Hampton. Bill is someone that I, that I endorse from a character perspective. And I think that the concerns about the safety in the queuing, I think you're talking to an actual human being. You're not talking to a corporation, the stockholders, or someone from out of state who really doesn't care that you're gonna get pushed to the secretary. It is my, is my understanding that your concerns will land on Bill and his team. And I think that, that it's really something that needs to be considered. And I think that his business will help alleviate some concerns and could be the catalyst of change. We all need these things to happen, and maybe they don't happen at the exact timeframe we want to. But I don't think really we can, we can say that Bill's successful business, I think we need to turn this into a positive, and maybe this is a catalyst for change. In terms of Cottage Street, so my business operates on the early side. And in terms of the parking, and we've noted, we work five days a week from Monday to Friday. There is a good amount of parking, I'm gonna use good, from eight o'clock until five-thirty every day. Thursdays and Fridays, that backs to like four o'clock. But we, as a business, and someone who sits in that front window on Cottage Street, there are parking up and down that street, in front of our spot, over in the public lot across the street. And so I think we need to also keep in mind that those hours aren't always gonna happen within the peak time that Cottage Street is busy. So, and even if Bill isn't there, there is still a parking problem. So although I understand people's concerns, I also think that if we continue this rhetoric of parking problems, all the people that I recommend coming to East Hampton, because the town is welcoming and is progressive, will sort of have this thing, will say, oh, well, doesn't Cottage Street have parking problems? And so I think that maybe will dissuade from any new business coming here. And so again, I think that that's a city problem, but I also think that we, we need to just accept that there is a parking problem, but that Bill's business is operating during non-peak hours, where there is amp, where there is good parking, on-street parking. And I also think that seeing these businesses, my, I do not operate retail, but walking that street all the time for the last year. I think that if Bill's business is successful during those non-peak hours, I also think that that foot traffic will really help those local businesses who are open and who do not have many people in them. So that is all I'm gonna say about this.
Thanks.
Excellent points.
Anybody else, comments or questions?
I'm sorry.
Hold on one sec, can we, this gentleman hasn't had a chance to speak yet, let's, thank you.
My name is Vincent Corsello, I live on Two Tory Way in East Hampton, and I have a business on one-thirty Cottage Street. I came today because I didn't really have an opinion on it. And I wanted to see what was going on and what the big fuss was about. I, I came to the meetings during, during the cannabis.
The ordinance, right?
Ordinance meetings. And it seems like, so if William, is it William? Yes. Was opening a wine shop, you know, which is something we need, it's something that would be crowded, maybe, right? Would we be having these same discussions, right? And so I guess all I wanted to say is, let's, you know, let's make it clear. We, we're all excited about the restaurants that have shown up, we're excited about all, all of us are. And we're all concerned about the parking. But we haven't had these discussions about, you know, should we put another restaurant here? Should there be another, any kind of business, right? And I, I know the numbers, sixty does seem big. And could be a problem, but whether it's you by yourself, or it's the next two or three businesses that go on Cottage Street, there is this continued growing parking problem happening. So I would just invite everyone to keep that in mind in, in this deliberation. This is a business that is new to us, and it certainly has its taboos around it, or did. And, but we as a community have embraced that we are open to these businesses, right? And this is another, like, I would rather see, you know, a cannabis shop than a, than another restaurant, quite frankly. And, you know, there's a lot of thought in this, you know, I, I know a lot of these people here who are, you know, supporting this. And, you know, and, oh, he left already, Wes mentioned it, no, there he is. About this idea that we're dealing with a person, right? We're dealing with a small business owner. And that's what we want on Cottage Street, and that's, you know, that's what we're looking for. And, and he's, he's gonna be accessible. And so, you know, I, I know that a lot of people have some, some issues, and I think that based on what I've seen, they're gonna get addressed more easily and more thoroughly by, by being neighbors, by, by, by talking about it. So I just wanted to mention that in the sense of. So I just wanted to mention that in the sense of, we have this problem of parking. We have this problem of, and I, I don't know how you're gonna fit all those people in there either, but I'm not, I'm not here to decide that, right? Like, that's what your job is, that's what your job is. And so, um, you know, I would just invite everyone to, you know, let's, let's get up on the balcony here and see this, this is another business opening. Um, we, we have all the laws and ordinances and everything in place to, to make sure that, that there's not just a big cluster, you know what, uh, on Cottage Street, so. So that's all I have to say and, and I would, I would like to say, yeah, whoever is in charge of the parking in this town, we need to, we need to do something, for sure, right? We need to be creative, we need, uh, you know, we need a short-term plan, we need a long-term plan, clearly. Which we will have a long-term plan, I have no doubt, but a, a short-term plan is, is really necessary. But I don't think that whether, whether it's, you know, William's business or, or anyone else is that, that, that that's gonna change that situation. Or make it better, or worse, or make it, make it a little slower, so, um, yeah, that's all I hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a phone call to your city councilors about that.
Okay, last, last one then we're wrapping it up.
Yeah, okay, one more and then we're gonna, we actually have something else on the agenda, so I think we're gonna have to-
We've gotta make a point.
There are two things. One is I asked about parking and what we've been told is, we're gonna let our customers know where they can park. They're telling us, what, what are they gonna tell their customers? What are they recommending? And to me, it makes a big difference. If they're saying, you can park anywhere you want on the, on the, the east side of Pine Street, I, I think that that's a problem. The other thing is, this is not just a restaurant. We have the experience in Massachusetts of this kind of business being established with hundreds of people. And they may have this thing, they're gonna have this website, but there're gonna be people that are gonna hear Pot Shop and they're gonna come and I really, you know, they say that they've got their good neighbor policy, they're gonna work with the police, I really hope that that's the case. This isn't just like any restaurant, it isn't any business. Uh, you know, I'm really happy to have businesses like, um, Mount Tom Ice Cream and Nini's Pizza and things like that. They aren't gonna have hundreds of people wanting to come to, to, to buy them. The other thing is, if this Pot Shop was gonna be open from eight to four, great, I'm all for that. That, that would be fine because it isn't gonna impact, that isn't the time that we are gonna have these terrible parking problems. This is not an eight to five, eight to four thing where we're gonna have the problem. It's gonna be the, and it's gonna be times when it's dark and it's, you know, n- not so easy. I just think that there's a, a lot of danger. But I would really appreciate to hear, where, where are you recommending that people park? Exactly, what street, you know, what street, what parking lot, where? Where are you gonna tell people to go first? Because if you don't tell them, if it, if, if I were just coming to the Pot Shop, I'm parking on Pine Street, right across from my house.
Thank you.
I think we need to make some actual progress toward going through the, uh-
Well, so that's the question, I mean, do, do we wanna make our findings tonight? And we have to go through those extensive findings on this.
I'd like to make a statement on that. We have a busy agenda tonight and a lot to do, there's a whole other one of these coming up right after this, but they've been through three meetings and I don't see any other deliberation here. I think it's on us to finish it.
I'm comfortable with that, everyone else is, when we can make our findings.
It's all about you reading for the next twenty minutes straight.
Well, um-
I think it would be an injustice to carry it out longer.
What's that? Well, we gotta go through and, and address these findings and then make a vote on the whole thing.
Can I make one comment about parking?
Please.
Just considering what Insa put out before they opened, they had a very detailed plan on the surrounding streets, where nobody should park. They put out plenty of signs, no Insa parking here and all of that kind of thing. Can we get something similar in this incident? When, when you're telling people on your website or showing them where they can park, can you very clearly delineate, you can't park on this street, you can't park on that street, you can park in the municipal lot, you know, things like that, so that people have a very good idea? You know, first of all, I can't consider me going anyplace where I'm gonna drive around town for fifteen minutes trying to find a parking place. I'm gonna go, if I know where the parking is, that's where I'm going to go. So if people have a very clear idea of which, um, either the municipal lot or, you know, like, uh, if it's, if it's a, a weekend evening when Riverside Industries is closed, there's a whole big parking lot back there, you know? Uh, so th- there are places in the city where people can park that are, are empty at many hours of the, the evening where, you know, we have folks that park down there and then go up to Cottage Street to go to the restaurants or the bars. So i- if, if people know ahead of time, before coming into town, what's city streets they're not going to be allowed to park on and which ones they are going to be allowed to park on or where their best bet is going to be for finding parking, I think that's gonna solve the majority of that problem.
The only reaction I, I would have to that is that, I believe perhaps the planning board does have the ability to require that upfront. It clearly would not happen at this meeting. So it's just a, a point of clarification. The, the plan for Insa came, um, through the subsequent discussions. So after the planning board approved Insa's baseline opening day plan with, which had provisions for addressing opening day parking and police details, it was through the subsequent discussions with the mayor's office, the planning department and, uh, public safety that that actual map got generated with the specifics shown. So that would happen for the opening day. So that would hope, that would, there would be a program where the expectation of this applicant would be that that same type of system would be developed in consultation with the police department in particular, but that would be temporary. So that's, you know, that's the temporary opening contingency and then, you know, subsequent to Insa's opening, there are no longer, or at least for the most part, there are no longer police details and that plan has loosened up. So that, so there would be, there's a question of this board whether there's a permanent plan or a plan that gets attached to this permit. Or, you know, the, the discussions that we've had is more about the reservation system, potentially the number of people, rather than the parking plan, so it's a point of clarification for the board.
I think you're saying that, you know, that we're grandfather, that we can't expect parking as part of the regular site plan, but under the medical area, specifically as an opening plan, we can require some sort of parking plan as an opening plan, it's a separate sort of thing and that's sort of our, our little loophole to get that in, the flaw which is that then it would potentially go away after opening. Did I get that right?
Well, I think, I mean, I would never, I wouldn't call it a loophole, I mean, I've tried, I think I've said at previous meeting that the board could discuss management of parking or strategies that they could employ to, to push people in certain directions without dicta- so the, the grandfathering that you've been referring to is, they're, they're, they don't have to require parking on their property.
Right.
That's the thing that the planning board can't require the parking on the property. But I don't know that you're precluded from talking about messaging or what they can do to manage people's parking habits a little bit. I, I do think that you have some leverage there.
I have a problem with this, this is problematic for me. Uh, I, I've talked many times and believed strongly about us having a, a parking issue and I know that's difficult for sales, uh, for people that rent on the street, they don't want that image. And I do want stuff to happen and I've talked about adding an agenda into this board to try and push things forward. But we've put so much onerous regulation on this process, more than any other business I've ever seen come before this planning board, that I'm a bit disgusted. And to continue it onto a fourth meeting to try and get parking that no one else on that street has ever had to do before, is too much for me.
There is no parking.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary to get parking. I also think that there's a consideration of the fact, as far as continuing this hearing, that the item that's next on the agenda has also come to several hearings and they likely will get bumped now because of it. But, um, I mean, I think the, the, the issue of parking, I think first of all, I think the bylaw does give us the ability to do that. I think you're right that we haven't used that in the past. Um, I also think there's certain unique characteristics of this industry that make that more of a concern here. I think it's more if you were to open an Apple store in downtown on Cottage Street that you would be concerned about the large numbers of people that are exceptional to someone who opens up some of the smaller retail shops we already have. So I don't think that it's the nature of the industry as much as the nature of the demand. Um, and so, uh, but I mean, to me, I, I think that where we're talking about a sixty-day plan now, um, you know, I think we can take this stab with the, um, you know, the reservation system, the sixty-person-per-hour limit, the involvement of the police department and the planning department and then a follow-up review sixty days after they open. And if things have gone completely horribly, then we can look at reducing the number of people that can be there per hour. If things have gone great, then we can increase that number or eliminate the reservation system. Or if we still don't know, we can say, let's keep the status quo for another sixty days. Um, I mean, I think that's completely appropriate, especially for something like this where, um, I, I think regardless of, you know, pro or con, we just don't know what the facts on the ground are gonna be. Hard to, to look ahead, the same way we might be able to look with a new grocery store and say, we've got data from a hundred years of grocery stores, you know, seventy-five of them with cars and we know what's gonna happen, you know, within the next ten years. I don't think we know what it's gonna look like next Christmas in this, this industry. So I think that that part, which benefits both us and the applicant, 'cause like I said, I mean, i- if we do what we think is gonna happen right now, you might be talking about six people per hour and we don't know what's gonna happen, right? I mean, it's, it's, so there's many extremes and I think it's a matter of balancing how frequently we want them to have to come back versus also how much flexibility we wanna give them for the ability to come back and modify based on what's happening on the ground. 'Cause I, I really, I, I mean, even more than some of the other situations we've approved, I, I have no idea what this is gonna look like really as far as demand when it opens this summer. Um, I think that that's a huge question mark.
It is rather unique.
Well, you know, there is a question everybody's, but everything is boiling down to parking. Whether it's gonna be this business or any business that comes on Cottage Street, there's four or five open slots there. Where are those people, when they come in, where are they gonna tell their people to park? I would, I would like to know when your people come in and they're queued and they're in and you say, how'd you get here? Where'd you park? Why'd you park there? Maybe, I don't know, maybe a survey of some kind, someone's gotten an idea, um, how, when and where to park. I mean, I like, well, no one liked the bussing idea, but maybe a van. But the idea is, we have to get those people there. How did they get there? Where they dropped off, they, they parked, where'd you park? You know?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Please, Eric.
I think between the hours of, uh, when you first open in the morning, was that gonna, was that gonna be?
Ten o'clock.
All right, ten o'clock in the morning until, say, four-thirty or four o'clock. I think you'll be fine. Like the, like the gentleman diner said, you got the off-hours. Things haven't picked up in the downtown in the city yet. But I honestly believe that on my heart, between five o'clock and, say, eight or nine o'clock at night, you're just not gonna be able to get people in and out of there. Forty, fifty or sixty cars an hour, it's just totally impossible. If anybody's ever been down in that area at that time of night, especially on a weekend, there's not that many cars pulling in and out of there, it just isn't.
But also, Eric, at some point that becomes a market force, right? So it's sort of like Jim Valencourt said, you know, he's not gonna circle for fifteen minutes to go to a restaurant, so. At some point, y- you have to assume that that will sort of self-select and people will decide if they can't, if they can't find a parking place, they'll go somewhere else.
I mean, uh, that's just gonna go against the business principle.
Right. So I think that that's, I, 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 I mean, I, I think that obviously that's the time of day when it's hard for any business, any customers, any business to find parking in downtown. But, um, I mean, I think that that's true regardless of what the business is. So, the question is-
I recommend we push forward, read through, this is just, you don't have to. You've asked to have an additional plan, you can disagree and say, I want more information. But for me, I recommend we push forward and wrap it up with what we've got. I think they've got enough precaution in place. And Mount Tom's easily has a hundred people in an hour, just saying.
What does other, what other members?
Who's had a hundred?
Mount Tom Ice Cream.
Does a hundred an hour?
In an hour, easy.
Especially they don't. No way in the world.
What do other, what do other members wanna do? Do we wanna go forward with the findings and make a decision tonight or do we wanna continue this for two weeks?
I think we should just get it over with.
Okay.
All right, let's proceed with the findings at least. All right.
The board has, do you wanna just introduce what you have there?
Yeah, so we have a, a draft decision which, which, um, addresses, we have considerations under both the special permit section of the bylaw and, uh, the adult-use cannabis bylaw, that we have to make specific findings of fact before any decision, um, allowing a special permit to issue, so.
Can I just say that they, there are proposed findings? So there's the section of the ordinance, which the chairperson will read, and then there's proposed findings based on the previous discussions. Some of them are very straightforward, some of them, maybe I will probe, probably annoyingly, to make sure that the board is comfortable with what the finding says, 'cause they're projected for discussion.
Well, some of these, just glancing at them before looked like they don't really apply to this anyways.
In terms of copy and paste mistakes?
Maybe.
Okay. Well, we can cover that as we go. And I'm taking notes here, so.
So the first one is conformance with provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. Um, the proposed finding states, the planning board finds that the applicant has received a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission and the use is contingent upon the applicant securing final licensure prior to commencing operations. Don't think there's any other issues with that section. Uh, number two, protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic or historic features on the site. We talked about, um, well, there aren't any issues with natural, scenic or historic features on the site, but we did talk about the, um, odor mitigation, um, and the systems that they're gonna employ to prevent any offensive uses in that sense with their neighbors or the sidewalk.
So the reservation system and the digital queuing?
Yeah, I guess that's, I guess that's part of it as well, sort of the, the, not allowing the use to overflow and interfere with neighbors' use of their property. Um, and speak up anybody if you've got a common or addition or question. Number three, minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads and maximizes the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. The proposal does not affect any unique natural or scenic features. Uh, planning board finds that the applicant has provided a range of mitigation measures to minimize impacts to surrounding properties, including the provision for appointment-only retail sales for the first, it says month, but we're gonna do sixty days. And digital line queue technology to reduce the potential impact of patrons lining up along the public sidewalk. The opening day plan includes provisions for use of paid police details on and off-site. Um, so I think we've talked about that. I think also included in that, the applicant has said that they're gonna direct their customers to places where there is public parking available. Um, I think preferably as Jim Valencourt said, the idea of, um, towards places where it'll also be like the least detrimental to neighbors and that sort of stuff. You know, I mean, you can park on Pine Street there, you can also park in municipal lot here. I think it'd be better to be directing people to that kind of a location where it's not gonna, um, interfere with your neighbors.
So I just wanna clarify, I'm gonna, the note I added was that the appointment-only would be for a minimum of sixty days. And so that's gonna be structured around that review process, but it's a minimum of sixty days.
Minimum of sixty days.
And digital line queue, queue is spelled Q-U-E-U-E.
Yes, that's a troubling word.
Um, and, and you say, technology to reduce the potential impact of patrons lining, do it, that sounds like there's a potent, there's people lining up on the street.
No, technology to prevent patrons lining up on the public sidewalk.
Yeah, I, we need to be really clear with that, it's not the reducing the potential, it's to re, to eliminate people lining up on the street.
Okay, number four, adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water and adequate means of protecting wetlands, water sheds, aquifers and well areas. Most of that doesn't apply here, we did talk about, um, the, I think most of the waste generated would be typical waste for a regular retail establishment, but the cannabis-related waste, we've received assurances from, um, their supplier that they're going to, uh, handle the disposal of any of the cannabis product.
Mm-hmm. Um- They can add that in.
I, I think this section that's in there, Jeff, doesn't really apply to this, I don't think it goes to stormwater plan or anything.
That's the one you got, yeah.
Yeah. Um, number five, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection and streets. Uh, proposed finding says, the planning board finds that no information has been submitted regarding any negative impacts to any of the city's resources listed under this provision. Um, the numbering seems to start over again, Jeff, but, um, that next one, uh, it should be six. Provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting and internal traffic control. Um, the proposal provides, this is the proposed finding, proposal provides, I believe it was, was it one or two?
One parking spa.
One parking space?
One dedicated.
One parking space for employees at the rear of the property. Planning board finds that the use qualifies for the parking exemption under section ten point one- Planning board finds that the use qualifies for the parking exemption under section ten point one twelve, with no additional onsite parking required. The board finds that the use is situated in the Cottage Street Cultural District, where many other uses do not provide onsite parking. I would also say that they did address, um, the lighting and security features in that back parking lot and the, the procedure that is used for deliveries from that parking lot, um, using that space that they have dedicated for that.
Locks on the doors.
Six is waivers, and so this is an issue that's come up in the past with cannabis businesses, requiring the applicant submit specific information regarding any waivers. So part of what we're operating under the assumption of is that you're gonna comply with all the typical regulations of the CCC, and so the extent that you have waivers, that you provide that, that information to us so that we know what's going on at the state level.
So unfortunately, what I figured out just happened is that the waiver, so there's two sets of findings that the board's gonna go through, the special permit, which is what the general ones that we were just doing, and then there's, and something jumped through, so the waivers is more specific to the cannabis.
We'll raise that later.
Okay.
Disregard. Seven, applicant's efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and retention of open space or agricultural land. Proposed finding says, the planning board finds that no exterior site work is associated with this application, therefore, this provision is not applicable. Number eight, minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Proposed finding says, the planning board finds that no exterior site work is associated with this application, therefore, this provision is not applicable. Nine, consistency of the development with respect to setback, area placement of parking, architectural style, and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and development. Again, there's no work to the exterior of the building, so this is not applicable. Ten, adequacy of measures to prevent pollution of surface or gra- or groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation and to minimize changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding. That application, uh, this application doesn't impact any of that, so it's not applicable. Eleven, adequacy of methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. I would say that we've addressed that with the odor control, odor mitigation stuff, um, also with the digital line queuing, um, to prevent sort of, uh, excessive noise or crowds from people showing up, and also the prohibition on loitering and queuing up outside, all applies to that.
Jesse, can I stop you for a moment?
Yes.
So waivers, I am taking out, we're just regarding that.
Yeah, disregard waivers for now, that's gonna come up later, spoiler alert.
Sorry.
Okay.
Number's down one.
So now, now we're moving on, um, this is, and it's actually under the adult-use cannabis, not medical, listed there. So the first one is no cannabis establishment should be located within three hundred and fifty feet of pre-existing public or private school, providing education in kindergarten or any of grades one through twelve in operation at the time of the application for a special permit or site plan approval. Planning board finds that proposed cannabis establishment is not within three hundred and fifty feet of an existing school as defined in section ten-ten or the CMR. Next, a cannabis establishment is permitted by special permit in highway business, downtown business, mixed-use mill-industrial, and industrial zoning, uh, districts. Finding is this establishment is located on a property situated in the downtown business zoning district where the use is allowed with a special permit. Next, except in mill-industrial and downtown business districts, no cannabis establishment should be located within a building containing residential units, including transient housing and group housing. This property is in a, in the downtown business district, but also does not contain any building with residential dwelling units. Six, uh, next, no more than six cannabis retailers shall be allowed in the city. And we are still under that number.
And the presumption is that this would be number two if, if this is approved.
Right.
One more of these to do.
Next, the cannabis retailer shall be located within, no cannabis retailer shall be located within two hundred feet of another cannabis retailer, except in the mill-industrial zone. There are no other cannabis retail establishments within two hundred feet of the subject property. Next, no cannabis shall be smoked, eaten, or otherwise consumed or ingested on the premises, except may be allowed in a cannabis membership club. All cannabis establishments permitted under this section shall comply with all state and local laws and rules regarding and regulations governing the smoking of tobacco. Proposed finding says, the proposal does not consider nor allow consumption of cannabis on the premises. The proposal provides specific security measures intended to prevent any consumption of cannabis anywhere within the subject property. Next, odor, no cannabis establishment shall allow the escape of noxious odors or gases. They shall incorporate odor control technology and provisions, and ensure that emission does not violate MGL chapter one-eleven, section thirty-one C. Proposed finding says, the planning board finds that as retail-only use, minimal odor mitigation me- measures are necessary. But that being said, they did discuss what systems they're using, um, which we've specifically found would address any concerns with odor control. Next, signage, all signage shall comply with the requirements of CMR and section ten of the zoning ordinance. The bone, board, uh, proposed findings is the board should include a condition that all signs comply with section ten, but the no directional signs shall be placed in such a way to obstruct the line of sight for drivers of vehicles entering or exiting the property. Sign must comply with the provisions of CMR, and that it does not contain any logos or designs that resemble marijuana. So Jeff, that should be a condition, that any future sign complies with section ten?
Well, the assumption now...
Or are we just finding that none of the proposed signs are, are not in compliance with section ten?
Right, um, this is a little bit of a leftover from, from another decision, so...
What did your sign look like? I forgot. Did we see a sign?
No. I think the original application had that.
It has a projecting sign off of the, off of the front of the building.
Just like, just like our neighbors, it's just a hanging sign off the front.
So there's no, it, it doesn't look like a marijuana leaf, there's no, it just says, it just says the verb is herb.
So I think, I think a condition that the signs comply with section ten is totally suitable.
Yeah.
Um, something that the building inspector would confirm. I know that the projecting sign off of the front to match the hanging signs on Cottage Street, there'll be no issues with that complying, and it's just a question of whether you have any stickered signs on the, on the windows, which was unclear if you had that, but I think...
But that way, it gives you flexibility to, it doesn't have to oppose to us, as long as it complies with the zoning, that will be fine. Right. Next, hours, cannabis retailer shall be open to the public no earlier than ten AM and no later than eleven PM. Proposed finding, as presented by the applicant, a condition of the special permit limits the hours of operation from, you said ten AM?
Ten.
Ten AM, excuse me, ten AM to eleven PM.
Ten AM to eleven PM. Seven days per week. The hours of operation apply only to retail sales open to the public and are not intended to restrict other employees or operations. Next, visual impact, cannabis plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from the outside of the building in which the cannabis establishment is located and shall comply with the requirements of the CMR. No outside storage is permitted. Any artificial screen device erected to eliminate the view from the public way shall also be subject to a vegetative screen, and the board shall consider the surrounding landscape and view shed and determine if the artificial screen will be out of character with the neighborhood. Plenty more finds that the proposal contains a retail dispensary where the interior of the premises will not be visible from the street. Thirteen applies to home occupation, which does not apply here. Uh, community host agreement, um, spec- no special permit shall be granted without first having an executed community host agreement with the city of East Hampton. The applicant has executed a community host agreement with the city of East Hampton as required under CMR, and has submitted the certification form to the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, next, the community outreach meeting, no special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until a community outreach meeting in accordance with the CMR has occurred. Finding is that the applicant has held a community outreach meeting as required under the CMR and has submitted a proof form to the Cannabis Control Commission. Next, cannabis establishment operations shall conform at all times to general laws, chapter ninety-four G, and regulations issued thereunder. Proposed finding states, the planning board conditioned the special permit on continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. Next, license requirements, the applicant shall submit proof that the application to the CCC has been deemed complete pursuant to the CMR. Copies of the complete application, to the extent legally allowed, should be provided as integral part, component of the application to the planning board, and no special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until this information is provided. Finding is that the, the applicant has provided proof of complete application by the Cannabis Control Commission. No special permit shall be granted by the planning board to an applicant without the cannabis establishment first having been issued a provisional license from the commission pursuant to CMR. Proposed finding states, the applicant has provided a copy of the provisional license dated...
You wanna know the date?
For retail sales, um, no person shall operate a cannabis establishment without having a license in good standing from the commission. Proposed finding is that the applicant will require a final license from the CCC prior to operation. All local review and approvals will be required to be completed prior to opening. Next, energy use, all cannabis cultivators shall submit an energy plan to the planning board. That does not apply, this is retail use only. Line queue plan, the applicant shall submit a line queue plan to ensure that the movement of pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic along the public right-of-ways will not be unreasonably obstructed. Proposed finding states, the planning board finds the opening day plan provides adequate measures to control pedestrian and vehicular movement adjacent to the site, including but not limited to provisions for appointment-only retail sales for the first, and it should be sixty days of operation, and I think it's a minimum of sixty days, we said for the other one, right, Jeff?
Yep.
And will employ parking lot attendants as needed, that does not apply, there's no parking lot in there. In addition, the applicant has agreed to pay for police details on an as-needed basis. A condition of the special permit requires the applicant review the adequacy of the opening day plan at a public meeting, um, after sixty days, right? So then the, the conditional language here is whether we want to have them include notice to a butters mailed by the applicant in accordance with chapter forty-eight, section nine.
Also, applicant, it requires the applicant review the adequacy, isn't, doesn't feel like there's enough of an approval process. That they're required to review it in an open hearing, that means they just show people how it's going, and there's no proving.
Well, the, the condition later requires that we continue to approve one, so I think that gets fleshed out as the condition. Do we, do we want to require them to include notice, notice to a butters in advance of that public meeting?
I think we have to, because there's no fee.
I think that's right.
Otherwise...
Yeah. So I think, I think we would require notice to a butters in accordance with section nine.
I think it's important. I think there's enough public participation in this that I think we wanna make sure everyone has a chance to speak.
Are you understanding what's being said?
Yeah, okay.
So there's just a technical question here, which is, the way it is set up and the way that it's been done in other municipalities is that this is a public meeting. So the board has the ability to require the applicant, in this case, notify a butter, so there's a list to get from the assessors' office. So I think what we wanna try to do, so with, if it complies with chapter forty-eight, section nine, so that's two weeks' notice.
Right.
So in advance of a public meeting in sixty days, you'd give notice of butters of two weeks. There's no fee, and it becomes a public meeting of the board, so it becomes an agenda item with notice of butters, but there's no hearing.
But it's not the public notice on the paper that requires it.
Right, the notice on the paper is what, you know, adds a significant cost.
Public meeting, not a public hearing.
Correct.
Exactly, put that in there, it's very, it clarifies things.
Okay, that's good. It does cost something, yes, it does cost, it doesn't cost nothing. Next, traffic impact statement, any cannabis establishment open to the general public shall submit a detailed traffic impact statement in accordance with section seven point four one oh four. Proposed finding, a traffic impact statement prepared by Hays Engineering dated November ninth, two thousand eighteen, was provided. The planning board finds that pursuant to the submitted study that the proposed use will create minor increases in vehicle trip ends, but will not adversely affect prevailing traffic conditions in the vicinity of the project.
Did this happen? We actually had a traffic plan for this one?
Yeah.
It came in, so that is the, it's intended to be a quote from the study, that overall, if you look at the prevailing traffic patterns and whatever, cars...
Way, way back.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I don't...
It's fine, I, I just wanted to, by all means, keep going.
And further finding that the board also found, uh, that there seems to be a working, uh, that to minimize traffic impacts and to better moderate patron activity, the approved opening plan includes provisions for appointment only for at least the first sixty days of operations and additional measures thereafter. Next, parking, parking should be in accordance with section ten point one. Proposed finding says, the proposal provides one parking space for employees at the rear of the property. The planning board finds that the use qualifies for the parking exemption under section ten point one twelve, with no additional onsite parking required. The board finds that the use is situated in the Cottage Street Cultural District, where many other uses do not provide onsite parking. Waivers, the applicant shall be required to submit specific information regarding any waivers from CMR granted by the commission. The planning board shall approve or disapprove said waivers based on the following tuition criteria in nine thirty-five CMR five hundred. Proposed finding says, the planning board found that any waivers from the CCC should be reviewed and approved by the planning board during a public meeting. That's it. Notice of enforcement order, within twenty-four hours of receipt of a notice of it a cannabis establishment shall file with the mayor, health agent, and the building commissioner any summary cease and desist order, cease and desist order, quarantine order, suspension order, revocation order, order limiting sales, deficiency statement, plan of correction, notice of a hearing, notice of any other administrative process or legal action, denial of a license or final action issued by a state agency, including but not limited to the commission and Massachusetts Department of Public Health regarding the cannabis establishment, cannabis control commission license, or the Department of Public Health certificate of registration. Proposed finding says, the decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by a state agency in accordance with section ten-ten-seven-twelve, the zoning ordinance. And finally, annual inspection, any operating cannabis establishment within the city shall be inspected annually by the building inspector or their designees to ensure compliance with this section and with any conditions imposed by the planning board as a condition of the special permit approval. Proposed finding says, the decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year. Said inspection should occur within a reasonable period of time of each anniversary of the first day of operation. Okay, so then we get to conditions, these are the proposed conditions, we can talk through each one.
I just need to take a moment, six pages, well done.
I'm working on it. Uh, one, for the proposed condition, uh, all interior and exterior improvements shall be constructed and maintained substantially in accordance with the approved plans and shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. In any event that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an alternative schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at a public meeting. We've done that, I think, with all these other prior establishments. Two, the cannabis establishment shall not create a nuisance situation pursuant to the definition of nuisance under section ten-ten-five-seven of the zoning ordinance, that's easy. Three, special permit associated with the use is contingent upon continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. Right on. Hours of operation of the retail dispensary shall be from ten AM to eleven PM, seven days per week. Next, the cannabis establishment shall operate in accordance with an approved operating plan, opening plan, for the management of patrons, parking, and security. Initially, the use shall operate in accordance with the plan approved on February fifth, two thousand nineteen, including for the first sixty days of operation, as proposed by the applicant. Retail sales operations shall be by appoint, shall be by appointment, with provisions for electronic line queuing and police details as needed and determined by the police chief. Said plan shall be reviewed by the planning board. Well, so you have sixty days.
Sixty days, yeah.
I think just sixty days after.
Or, and a hundred, sixty and a hundred and twenty, is that?
Well, let's just say sixty, 'cause when we come back on sixty days, we can decide how long we're gonna extend it then.
All right, can we, can we write that in, so, so the board after, be reviewed by the planning board?
Sixty days.
Sixty days after opening.
Yep, and at which point, an additional plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board for operations thereafter. Just don't call it final, 'cause I don't know that that'll be the final one or not.
Or a revised plan, a modified plan, shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board for operations. For the next sixty days.
Right, and that's what I just wanna write in there, I think, or, with another established timeframe.
Right, and it, but I think it'll be either another interim plan or a final plan, I think it's possible.
It could be a final plan.
Right.
And is there an assumption that a final plan doesn't require a time after that, an additional meeting after that?
Right, the final plan is when we finally give up.
Okay.
'Cause that, we, once, I mean, that's, would, they have to have an approved operation plan, which is what number five says. So if, and it has to be in effect every day that they have the special permit in play. So if we don't approve one, or if there, it expires, and they don't have a new one, then they're in violation of they, of their special permit.
So it's an interim or a final plan? What, is that the language you're using?
After sixty days, I think that we would review and approve a further plan, whether interim or final, for operations thereafter. 'Cause I, I, I can see a situation where on day sixty, we say, this looks good, you're done, or come back again in ninety days, or whatever. So I think we'll leave that open.
Still have control.
Right, does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah. Is that okay for you, Jeff?
Yep.
You understand where it's going, okay?
Okay, next, uh, any waivers granted by the Cannabis Control Commission associated with the operation shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to implementation, except for any waiver granted for the sale of marijuana products tested by the Department of Public Health rather than the Cannabis Control Commission. So that was acknowledging a potential change in the regs.
I don't know if that's still necessary, but it, it allows the flexibility.
Might as well leave it in there just in case. Seven, the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by a state agency in accordance with section ten-ten-seven-eleven of the zoning ordinance, and shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year from the date of opening in accordance with section ten-ten-seven-twelve.
So two quick things, so I, I slipped in for number seven, all signs shall comply with section ten.
Sure.
And then there's a little bit of some text on the document that the board has, there's some leftover text from a draft. some leftover texts from a draft, all of which has been incorporated except for one item, so I'd like to discuss it.
Yep.
Well, there's two. So there is, there was a draft condition that I, that was contemplated, the occupancy of the retail space shall be strictly enforced by the owner. In addition, the owner shall actively manage the exterior of the property and patrons to prevent the gathering, loitering, and line queuing on the public sidewalk, so that reiterates what's in the opening day plans, I don't know if it's necessary, but that was one item. And then the last, the last one is any changes to the general operation or significant changes to the interior site plan.
Oh, the male to the nature of patron management.
So, so we do, there is a potential, you know, there's some potential for the occupancy numbers to be adjusted, so if for some reason those occupancy numbers are shifted way down, I think that the board should be aware of that, because I think it has the, a domino effect on what's happening with the reservation.
I think that's right.
So it's, it's giving the approval with a requirement that if something changes significantly, especially to lower the occupancy for some reason, that's a change that should be reviewed by the board.
I would support including both of those sections in there, just because I think it makes it clear, but.
Concur.
Okay, so in light of all of that, anybody on the board have any other comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, can I ask the applicant anything at this point?
Sure.
How small of an operation, say you were forced to go really small in this deal?
Yep.
How small could you be to maintain, I might even show you how to phrase this, I really don't know, and I might turn you on the spot.
No, I don't know actually, I looked at this number.
Yeah, how small could you be before, you know, you got in trouble financially in this whole thing?
Can you just eagle up to the mic, sorry, thank you.
You know, say you got, you know, you got a real squeeze in this whole deal, say you come back in sixty days and you're getting a parking, you know, a circus and everything else, and you were forced to, you know, kind of squeeze your business down, how small could you go before, you know, you quit maintaining your financial health?
Yeah, the very lowest number of people that could come through there a day, it used to be thirty, but now I've incurred more expenses, I think it's probably thirty-five or forty.
An hour?
No, a day.
Oh, a day, okay.
All right, so that's cool, that's good.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
That's all I want, that's good.
Okay.
I motion to approve the special permit for Herbology Group Inc.
No.
Nope.
You gotta wait.
I deserve to wait. I want to make an appointment.
You gotta, you gotta wait for, for the next hearing, wrong applicant.
Did I do Herbology, my apologies, I rescind my earlier motion. I motion to approve the special permit for the Berbers Herb LLC, and I didn't even catch that. That's how tired I am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
Who seconded the motion?
Chet did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we will work on getting a written decision signed and out to you, and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We do have another item on the agenda, so if you folks can file out quickly and quietly, that would be great.
Thank you very much, good luck. You picked a fine director.
I, I am going to step aside.
Ladies and gentlemen, clearly I had herbology on my mind. We'll just take a few moments to let the room clear out, and then we'll start the next phase of the process, okay? Sorry.
You shouldn't get so upset.
I, I needed to get it out.
Well, I'm serious, you're short. I feel very, you know, there's a lot of crap, I could have brought it up here and I didn't, I kept it to myself.
You're good, I was wrong.
No, you're not wrong.
Remember, you're on the record.
I like experience.
All right, we're good, we're good.
And I really respect your opinion, believe me.
Right back at you.
Same with Mr. Cox, I tell him.
Oh, how are you?
All right, we've got, everyone, if you could leave, if you're not part of the herbology group, we need to move on, we need to clear the room, we've got a lot to do and very little time to do it in, please do not have conversations in this room if you're not part of the herbology group. Is it herbology or herbology, I don't know.
Herbology.
Herbology, okay.
Like herb, like the name?
Out you go.
Bye-bye now. Okay, I love you, bye-bye.
Okay, Chet, are you, are you heading, are you coming back, or are you?
We do have to come back, you have to be part of it.
Thanks, Annette, you're our, you're our strong arm.
She is, she's like the crossing guard of our life.
All right, everybody.
She protects my children and my board.
If you were me, we're cruel, sleek.
Come on back to us.
Bring her for backup.
All right, everybody, we're going to continue, we have a late, this was scheduled for six thirty PM, I know it's eight fifteen.
Everyone's got to get home to listen to the president.
Yeah, so, so at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the applicant, we have, I see three of you here tonight, is that right?
Yes.
Are you, yes?
Okay.
Can you tell us what's new?
For sure. Again, Philip Saltman for Herbology Group, here with April Harmon and Kate Crowe, they're also representing the company. So really, there's not too much that has changed, I think Jeff's going to hand you some plans, and I'll ask you to take a look. I apologize that Tony Cappuccetti, the engineer, at the last minute ended up with a family situation, so you'll have to muddle through with me trying to explain what he's done, but fortunately, I don't think it's all that complicated. There were some comments from the city engineer on the stormwater report, he was, had some concerns, mostly regarding puddling, and so there's been some regrading of the property that's proposed on sheet C one, which is the first sheet that you have, to take care of that. There's a note there also that's been added that talks about catch basins, and we're basically going to inspect them, and to the extent that some of them are deficient, we're going to replace those. There's further detail on those catch basins, I think it's on page C four, coming up, I'll get to it, but that's really the only change from the last time we were here on sheet C one, that's before you. No changes on sheet C two, which is the landscape plan, nothing at all has changed, nor on sheet C three. C four, as I mentioned, does have this additional precast catch basin, shows you what that is if, if we find that the ones that are there need to be replaced. That's the only change there. And then C five is in addition, the last time you were here, you know, we talked a great deal about trying to work with our neighbors here, and I think we've been able to accomplish all of that, and come to agreement with everybody. So there's really a couple of things going on here, sort of to the left of that sheet is the Overlook Industries property with Mr. Moran, and there's going to be, we're moving his gate back into the property a little, which would allow trucks to sort of pull into the property in front of that gate where they couldn't before, and it might have caused a bit of a backup.
Is that where it says arm gate?
Exactly, yes. We've also, at the back of the property there, created a turnaround for trucks, which was requested as well, and there's going to be some repaving of the property as well. That's to his satisfaction. I should also let you know, Mr. Moran also owns a storage facility nearby, we have agreed with him that we're going to be replacing, or automating his gate on that storage facility as well, he felt that that would enhance the security of that facility, it's not on the plan here, but he and I have had that discussion, we're going to be putting that agreement in writing.
Last time, at the very end of the meeting, he came to us and said you hadn't had a conversation with him yet, I'm very glad to hear that you've had that conversation. Do you have any kind of, I mean, I'm not seeing you here tonight, oh, there he is, sorry, wait in the back. All right, we'll check on you later, then, I just want to make sure that you're, that what he's saying is accurate.
Thank you for being here this late.
I, I don't believe there's any dispute, we've given him a budget, a five thousand dollar budget for that automated gate.
Okay.
And as I said, the rest of it is on the plan, so.
Okay, great, please continue.
Complied with. In addition, we finalized our discussions with All About Children, that facility, there are, on the plan that you're seeing on C five, we've agreed to replace, there's a, there's a fence around the playground at All About Children, we've agreed to replace that with a six-foot fence, as shown on the plan, and also, we're putting up some, some screening, some arborvitae around that area to provide some additional landscape screening. I also sent in a letter that provides some additional items that we're going to be doing there, we've agreed to, for the first sixty days, at least detail at the rear of the property, and then thereafter, sort of at the police chief's discretion, just to make sure that there aren't problems with foot traffic, vehicular traffic, that sort of thing. So that's another issue that we've, we've come to agreement on. We're going to be also, we've agreed to hold an open house for the parents of All About Children, at least a week prior to the opening, to answer their questions and try to help them understand the operations. We've also agreed to provide them at least a week before opening with all of the contact information for the managers of the facility, so that if they have any concerns as they arise, they're able to get in touch with us and let us know what those concerns are, and we'll address them, so I think that's helpful.
Did you say that you have a twenty thousand dollar budget for All About Children, is that what I read in here?
Yeah, it's a twenty thousand dollar budget, we expect that the items shown on the site plan are going to cost about seventy-five hundred, don't hold me to it, but something in that range, and then there's additional money that they're just really effectively going to be provided, because if they have other issues that they think will help them mitigate any impacts, we're happy to let them use those funds to address those issues as well. So that is a part of this, and we have agreed that in any instance where we have to provide a notice to any butters, technically, they're not considered in a butter, they don't own that property, but we will include notice to All About Children for any of those issues as well. And finally, there are a number of, for signage, they wanted some signage on Industrial Road, no parking signs for herbology customers, they wanted some speed limit signs put up there, and they wanted some additional signage directing herbology customers to go around to the North Hampton Street, and we're happy to talk to the DPW about that, we, I don't believe have the authority to, to do that ourselves, but we certainly would have no problem with it, and we're, we intend to talk to the Department of Public Works about those issues, so I think those are the issues, and I think.
Can I tackle then the, you covered a lot there, and I want to just try to put some of this to bed here, including me. The, the work that you're doing at All About Children and also at Overlook Property, those are the two, they're not quite a butters, we'll call them butters for the sake of argument here, that, for which you're doing some special treatment, is that correct, there's two of them?
Yes.
And I'm going to treat this a little differently, I will open up things to public comment later, but because the two of you are directly involved in what's happening here, I'd like to ask you to come up, I'd like to start with you, sir, because you were mentioned first, and just confirm that the information that we just received is accurate in terms of the funds and the agreement that you arranged to.
Hi, John Moran, I own Overlook Industries and Parkway Storage, those two properties are actually direct to butters to the proposed site. We've been pleased with the work that's been done, back and forth with Tony, with Phil, with Kate, and they've addressed our concerns. Once we see the details, we'll know more about it, but the bullet points that we've covered is acceptable to us.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll just wait to see what the formal proposal looks like.
Okay, and can I, can I ask you to come up too, please? And, and after this, we'll discuss how, I mean, this clearly is going to need to be a condition of some kind, that, you know, that requires this, I'm not sure how that gets done, but go ahead.
Yes, we, we sat down, I had the opportunity to sit down with Phil and with Kate two weeks ago, shortly after the planning board meeting, that wasn't canceled, and we had addressed the concerns with them, they took those and came up with the proposal that's in front of you right now.
Okay, so you approve?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, that's good news.
It is.
Thank you.
Negotiations, great.
Right, so I think, my understanding of previous discussions wa, was that a certain set of mitigation measures were, were going to be connected to the special permit, and so those are the ones I, you know, understand are on sheet C five, so they're listed as off-site improvements. So that's pretty straightforward, I believe, in terms of the plan work, in the draft decision, similar to what the most people just sat through, there is a proposed condition, there's some narrative that the chair will read through eventually, but then there's a condition that talks about, I'm scrolling to it, so, you know, it's, it's a little bit generic, and we could talk about language, but all exterior onsite and offsite improvements shall be constructed and maintained substantially in accordance with the approved plans, and shall be completed, you know, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so that's what the applicant needs to open.
So you're saying that essentially by putting it in the plan, it doesn't require expen, a special calling out?
Correct, and, and I think that the only other, the additional item would be the letter, the cover letter, which identifies.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the other components, so you could incorporate, I didn't, I don't know that's in here yet, but I think those provisions identified in the letter of F one, you know, must also be, you know, we have, yeah, comply with by certificate of occupancy, so that just leaves out the other one about the self-storage, so I don't know if that's sort of separate in a side, that's not in any current document that we can.
It isn't.
So, so, okay.
We're happy to explain that, make that a condition, it's really not a problem if that's what you'd like to do.
And self-storage.
Just make it clean.
Make a note here so I can remember.
So mechanically, it works, I mean, this is.
Yep, sounds like it.
Not entirely uncommon, so.
Does, does the board at this point have any other questions about the working with the neighbors component, which was a big discussion throughout this process, and getting past this is a big deal, it seems like we're on the verge of that, do you have any questions about that?
Not really.
Everyone happy?
Well, the only, the only question I have is that, was like a back locker somewhere that, they can have the first refusal to sell it or something, whatever that, what's that on the back?
We haven't, we can't do that, so we haven't proposed it, I don't think it's being required by via butter, so.
Well, I'm just curious as to what's going on in it.
It's, there's an additional lot, there were two lots there effectively, and, you know, I think what we want to do is sort of see what the operation looks like, and have a little while to sort of get used to the operation and see, maybe we don't need that lot, and I know that All About Children's landlord is interested in it, and if we don't need it, I think we would consider talking to the gentleman about it, but it's sort of, it's not something we really can decide right now, that that's the only issue.
That's fair.
Okay. Why don't we then move past that, and let's bring in our expert witness, we talked about the stormwater component of this.
He looks at me like that.
How do you feel about the C one?
Yeah, I mean, the, the modifications were minor, and, and the, the agreeing, the compliance with the in-town engineer, the city engineer about the catch basins is, makes things even better, so I don't really see any concern.
Regarding stormwater?
No, it's, it's still, everything is still compliant with stormwater regulations.
Okay. I did, if it's, I don't know if it's actually in front of you, there is a very short, brief email from the city engineer from today, February fifth, indicating that he has reviewed the plans, yeah, so I have the one where he acknowledges the traffic, and I didn't print it.
I don't think I have it.
But the city engineer did sign off on, you know, the changes made by the applicant's engineer, so I do have that, it's just not.
And he says, thanks for forwarding, I'm okay with traffic, given the significant reduction over the existing use allowed, what's the existing use allowed?
And I have a similar email that concurs with the applicant's efforts to meet the stormwater management ordinance as well, so.
Okay, so we can check that off. Over the past couple of meetings, we've covered a lot of the basics already, let's just grab a couple of them so that we can have them when we do findings, your hours of operation?
It's ten to eight.
Ten to eight, now can I ask, is that your final answer? And, and here's why I ask that, because the, the ordinance does allow for ten to eleven, and I, I see a situation where you might modify that later, so I want to make sure that we get this right and lock it in.
If you modify it, you just have to come back.
We might as well go for the maximum extent.
No, I'm not trying to promote you, you know, staying open.
No, I, I think you raise a good point, it's not the intention right now, but why not have the option, so I think we'd go ten.
You can, you can close at 8, but if you want to stay open 11-
Yeah, it's a 10 to 11, I think it is.
You'd have to come back to us.
Now, we're talking about the retail component, is that correct?
That's correct.
The growing, obviously, the 10 to 11 applies.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're saying that it's not-
10 to 10?
10 to 10, yeah.
We go 10 to 10.
10 to 10.
It's good enough, why not?
And that's with the ordinance. Does anyone have an issue with that?
Exactly.
Okay. We've also gone thoroughly through the process, how things move inside the building. We've talked about security, we've talked about lighting, we've talked about trash, traffic, parking, all those, you checked off all the boxes. You presented nothing else new to us at this point, other than what I've just gone through and covered, except maybe that catch basin, but I think you talked about that. Does anyone have any further questions on the board at this point?
Pretty good.
No? In that case, I'd like to open it to the public for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to talk about this?
I'm just wondering about smell mitigation. That was one of the things that was supposed to come back.
Good point, good point.
And that being a huge, huge concern with children there, so I just-
That is one of the ones I care much about, so why don't we talk about that? Thank you for bringing that up. Dynamic air quality solutions and max filter. Tell us a little bit about this plan you presented for. Sorry.
Yeah, that's more of a city engineer question. I thought we had spoken about that the last time, to your satisfaction.
I think what happened last time was it was discussed and identified as something that had to come back, and then at the last hearing, it was available, but the hearing didn't really unfold in terms of discussion, so there is a letter.
Sorry, I had asked for a little bit more detail, and you provided information here about what the, what the components are that are going, you gave that detail.
Yeah.
Which specific devices, the, the carbon-activated filters?
Yep.
The polarized air cleaners.
It is, and my understanding is also that it is a type of system where if you have, if, if they've implemented a system and it's still not sufficient, you can add filters and it will actually, you know, it will enhance the ability to, to deal with the problem. So it's, to the extent that there is deemed to be a problem, there are adequate responses. You can just add to the system.
So this is something that concerned me greatly, and, and I looked at the detail and I read it, and that looks good, that fits the measure. But you provided a map, which amongst my mess, I can't seem to find right now, that had sort of color-coded the yellow and green as the two different environments that we're using, the two different types of odor mitigation. Can you just briefly, maybe you can't, you need your executor.
That would be hard for me to do. Again, and that was a little bit, you know, it's sort of based upon a cultivation area and what's deemed to be an appropriate filter for that versus just your retail area. And I will tell you that, you know, I think even that is subject, I, I don't think, in, in most of the situations where I've been before planning boards, we're rarely asked to provide too much detail, other than sort of specify some of the equipment.
Welcome to East Hampton.
No, I appreciate it. But it's more sort of, as you get into the, you know, more specific building plans, a lot of that comes, comes out. I think what's important that I'm trying to get across is, to the extent that it turns out that whatever plan we make is insufficient, we're more than happy to continue to meet that, and if there's a-
There was one thing lacking.
Yeah.
And like I said, I did pay attention, I did review it, because it's a matter that's important to me. And the one thing that I was hoping to see, you did provide me with a plan, that was great, and it showed which ones were using the devices, but it didn't show the input-output ports of the vent ducts, like where the charcoal filter is going outside externally.
Yeah.
Now, ultimately, because there were only a very small amount of space, you're not using the full amount of the buildings for this. I mean, I know there's a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 that we're talking about. That's something else we'll have to put in the conditions, by the way, but because of that, I felt, okay, this is enough. Had you been going for more square footage and grow, this would have really been a flag for me to really have a better understanding of where it is actually filtering out, where those smells are coming out in terms of the direction of the street. So because I didn't see that on the plan, and I know you don't have your engineer here, but whatever team you have assembled, I do want to know, right, one thing, where are the exhaust vents in the building?
And, and I didn't really understand that you needed to know the specific location of the vents. Again, that's not something generally that we're asked at this point, but-
Can you just pull out in the plan right now, anything at all as to where you think they are?
Or if you don't know, can you, can you guarantee they won't be venting directly to All About Children?
That's sort of where I'm headed.
Sure, sure.
So the positioning, if you look at the plans for the cultivation that actually faces away from-
You got the map. Awesome, Jessica.
Yeah, great. Kate Crowther, sorry, with the Novus Group. I believe the cultivation actually is on the opposite side of the building from All About Children. The mechanisms that are utilized scrub for about 98% of odor. The remaining 2%, if, or it might even be 99%, it's that 1% to 2% if it were to kill it 100%. It would kill everything with, like, including people. It's, it's very harmful. So then you engage common sense practices. So we have a clean room, we have, you know, you close the door behind you. You can even do double, double entry and exit to contain the odor. I don't know if it will be roof-mounted or if it will be coming directly out of the-
So it may go up.
It, it might, and it, that's, that's a structural question that an architect would have to answer. And I don't know if they've examined that thoroughly, because it also depends on the equipment that's being installed. And until all of those systems are put into place in terms of weight, energy usage, and everything else, it's hard to know exactly where the best positioning would be, because you don't want to be drawing away and compromising the plant, and you also don't want to be compromising the health of your employees, you know, just proper positioning.
I'm trying to discern how difficult to be here. This is an important thing. This is one of those things where, you know, if it goes up and it starts to spread around, and, and I know that we work hard, all these businesses work hard on mitigation for this, and it does cover a large percentage. And it's not just cannabis we're talking about, it's plastic companies and everything that comes before us. But getting this wrong could be a big deal to a large swath of neighbors where it's vented. I did specifically ask for kind of a layout of where the path and flow of it was last meeting, and those words came out of my mouth. So I'm, I'm a little put off by the fact that I don't, I don't know exactly where it is. That's troubling to me. That's the kind of thing that people are going to come back later and be, why didn't the planning board make that, that horrible smell that's covering our community go away?
And I would also say, and, and this is where, I apologize if it comes off as I'm pushing back a little bit, but I'm kind of doing that right now. We've been before you several times, and I think that we've shown a very strong, good-faith effort that we are invested and committed to getting this right. We have changed our plans many, many times. We have met with the neighbors. We are spending well over $50,000 in order to mitigate anything that could negatively, or perceived to be negatively impacting our neighbors, and we would aim to do the same thing, because even what we propose right now, there could still be a hiccup. And, and that could depend on what the weather conditions were the day that you were outside of the building. We don't know, and we can't guarantee anything, but what we can say is that no matter what, when the issue is raised, we are going to come back and we are going to correct it, and we will correct it immediately, to the extent that we can.
And, and to be fair, this activated carbon scrub system that they're proposing is what other?
I have stood outside of Insa and not smelled a thing, and they have a large cultivation, it's tiny.
They have the same system, you can't smell it, and they have an entire cultivation, huge cultivation.
Thousands, tens of thousands of square feet.
So no one's going to smell anything.
And what's your square footage for grow currently?
I believe it was under 1,000.
Under 1,000, yes.
I think-
So we're okay?
But I think, so I think without, so I had the map up, which doesn't show the vent locations. It's either going to be on the entrance, so if you look at the site plan, it's either going to be on-
Can you put it back up again?
Okay.
Sorry.
It's going to be on three locations. So on the, on the, on the right side of the green is the entrance area, so it's the parking area that has some of the handicapped accessible parking and the walkway in.
Yeah.
Or it's going to be on the bottom of that map.
Yes.
And that's going to be the side facing away from industrial parkway, or it's going to be on the roof. So you're going to have, there's three general, I mean, I'm just observing from my limited experience with this. So we don't know the exact location of the vents, however, what I have in front of the board is a draft condition, which is totally modifiable to tailor this a little bit more, but I think what the board can really hinge this element on is the letter, this, this is an operation and maintenance plan for the system.
Yeah.
So the board has not necessarily focused on this element on other applications. So this may be one of the key items, which is that this talks about an outline for the life of the carbon filters, and it does say that, you know, the end user may determine it is necessary to exchange filters earlier than the prescribed maintenance period, and then there's a record-keeping log. So I think there is a point where the responsibility for dealing with an odor issue falls on the Board of Health and the health agent, but the, the nature of this condition gives that authority to the health agent to continuously go back to the applicant until the problem is solved. So this condition should work in terms of if there is an issue, the health agent will go back to this and get the records and make sure that they're maintaining in accordance with the plan.
Right.
And then if it continues to be a problem, then they need to be changed more frequently.
Okay.
I think that there is a scale, you know, it's a much smaller scale than the other operation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's extremely unlikely that, that there's a tiny chance that it would impact All About Children, specifically because of the way the building layout is, there's an actual building in, in between any vent.
I find that compelling.
But I am trying to just express to the, you know, the owner of All About Children too, that this is, this is the mechanism that's available. So once, once something like this is in operation, it's not the planning board who's going to go out there and do the sniff test. It's going to be the health agent who has, so there's a general, mass general law, which is specific to nuisance odors, and it gives the health agent the authority to inspect the interior facility, require upgrades or changes, and then, you know, mitigate whatever the, you know, if it's, you know, a plastic manufacturing plant, plant or something like that.
Yeah, any other industrial.
This isn't the first time. So I have a condition that, you know, would add that the odor mitigation and maintenance plan be, you know, substantially in accordance with this letter, which gives the authority to the health agent to, to work on the maintenance system.
That's fair.
That is a good response, and that covers that. And thank you for answering my questions. I get persnickety when it gets late. Okay.
Someone get him a Snicket card. All right, Aretha Franklin.
Yeah. So any other questions from the board on any other issues?
I just had two or three. So the draft list of conditions didn't necessarily include any reference to a security plan. So I know there's some sensitivity about the public nature, the public information around that, but I think, I want to talk about that there's certain elements, such as the flagpole camera, you know, that got mounted. That's kind of specific to this case, that I want to make sure that we kind of snap, flag that in the conditions, that that's an important element to this project.
I think that's in the plan as well.
Okay.
So I think I submitted to you the additional camera plan that showed exclusively the dedicated cameras for All About Children and John's property.
And that would be something that-
And those are, those are dedicated cameras, not, yeah.
So it's in the plan, therefore it's under the condition number one, exterior and onsite and offsite improvement.
Yeah, we did see that.
Okay. I just, we always encounter questions about landscaping. So this is a, a good detailed landscaping plan. You know, this is not necessarily optional. This is, you know, there will be an inspection of the property to determine that these plantings are substantially in accordance with what's on the plan, and that, that'll be the same for the off, off-site improvements as well. So I just, so that's where we talked about this with the other decision and the condition around certificate of occupancy. So there is the potential for this to be ready for occupancy in, say, December. You're obviously hoping for, for that, but if there is a scenario where the occupancy is ready in December, and you're no longer in a planting season, there would be an option for them to come to the planning board and say, we get a, the building inspector has a conditional occupancy, they keep them grant for five months, which would get them to the spring. They would then have to commence all the plantings before they get the final seal. So that's the nature of that condition.
Yep, understandable.
And I believe that there was a letter last time from the chief of police. I think that that's all I want to flag as items that will come up.
So what about the opening plan? Sort of the last thing that I want to touch on just a little bit. You talked about having officers outside.
Yep.
Monitoring the parking lot, bringing people in.
Appointment only for 30 days.
30 days. And I want to talk about review process. We just, I, I think you may have sat through that in terminable meeting we just went through. Where there was-
Your adjective, not mine's.
It certainly was. Where, where there was a condition added to bring it back for review. Now, as it stands with the proposal here, you've got 30 days of, of police presence that you're paying for. But I'm not recalling off the top of my head, maybe, maybe you all can, about what happens after that 30 days.
It's the police, it's the police chief's discretion.
Yeah.
Alberdy.
Yes.
It is, yeah, it's in there, that he has the discretion to keep them there as long as he feels necessary.
And that the only caveat then is whether or not there's police presence in your opening plan. Nothing else, everything else in your operations is, is up to your discretion.
Yeah, we, we, I believe, had said we would have a police detail, two of them.
Yeah.
One, I think, out on North Hampton Street.
Yes.
One in, within the property itself, and now actually we're going to have a third out at the rear.
Yeah.
So it's going to be quite a presence.
I'm okay with that and not putting any additional conditions in in this case, because they have plenty of parking. It's really not an issue. It's a private area over there. It's going to be way behind shrubs. If there's a ton of people in that lot, no one's going to know it. So I really, I, I just don't see a need to have them come back for an opening plan review. Any disagreeing voices?
I agree with you.
You mean after?
After that 30 days, right now, it goes to Alberdy, not to us in any kind of public hearing, as we just described in our last meeting.
By appointment only, do they, so that's only for 30 days here, so after 30 days, they make their own decisions on how to have their queuing plan?
Just because Karen might have gotten a little nervous when you said if there are a ton of people on the property, nobody would notice. She would notice. As would John. So I just want to be, so just so we're clear, if there were to be an exorbitant number of people, we can switch to an appointment-only system. We also have the ability, just like if you're at a restaurant, and it's going to be a 20-minute wait, you are given a buzzer, people can wait in their cars. Again, I don't anticipate with a size facility and the number of parking spaces that we're going to have, I'm not anticipating being a problem. I think that if we determine that there is a time of day, or, or a time of day on a certain day of the week where we're experiencing high volume, then we can engage the appointment-only system on that day during that time on a regular basis. Same if there are any special events, so say before holidays, Fourth of July, anything that we would anticipate where people would be making advanced purchases for any reason, especially the medical patients.
It's by appointment only in the beginning.
In the beginning, yes, but we can trigger that system again at any time.
But it's at your discretion.
Yeah. Well, or in collaboration with the police chief. I mean, it's-
He can tell them to do it.
He can tell us to do it, yeah.
Right. So for us, the, the issue here is about what we condition, you know, what we put in. And as it stands right now, it, it's saying that the police chief will have the ability to determine police presence. I don't believe there's any language in there about determining the continuation of appointment only. That would really be a-
I think it's not in the special permit application necessarily, but in all correspondence with us, it's been made very clear that this is a fluid and ongoing discussion, and-
Do we condition it?
I would like to see them back in 90 days. I don't know if it has to be 60, but I think it'd be great. I, I want to get a data point. I want to just hear all of these places.
And that's fine.
Why don't we just do that?
And I think it is in line with, so I have, if I want to pass out, I mean, Insa was the first, and it had potentially the most liberal. And then we just went through a more intricate dance, whereas this one would be following back in line with Insa, where the, that the planning board does have an opportunity to understand what is happening after 90 days, just in case, you know, there's no signs of an appointment-only system anymore. It'd be record-keeping for, that would be where if, if three years out, there's another board member, board structure, you know, and there was an actual plan in place that was approved at some point along the way to-
Are you all in agreement with that?
So, I don't know. You're saying that you want to go bump it up to 90 days?
I would think 90. That's in line with Insa. We did 60, I think, for the last applicant, because it's such a contentious, contentious site. But this is not as much in this, as far as parking and traffic and, but, but I still would like to see the applicant back to just give us a history of what's happened.
Yeah, but see, the, the police chief has the authority to-
He does.
He's got a lot of authority over them.
He does.
So why would we want to bring them back and extend it? You really think we need it?
The opening day plan is 30 days currently.
Right.
So there's a little bit of gap there, if we were to ask them to come back after 90, as to like what happened after 30, you know. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. We could adjust, but it just, it's kind of a-
Would we be better with 60? Well, no.
Would you like to have it be at the police chief's discretion as to whether we need to come back to talk to you?
Police chief's discretion. Why don't we just leave it at 30?
Well, I, I'll acquiesce. I get that you want to come back, you want to get a data point, and I know that you're seeing it as sort of a standard here. But I, I'm having trouble visualizing the need with this business.
Well, if we don't need it, can we have like a letter?
But you don't know. So, so you as the planning board cannot legitimately defer all future responsibilities to the police chief. There is, there is authority that he has. If it's necessary, whatever is necessary will happen.
Right.
But that's not what you're doing tonight, is you're not deferring every future judgment to the police chief. You have a responsibility. I think, you know, I think the way it's structured is that at some point, this will not be an issue.
I don't really need it to be on him either.
Right.
Given the layout and the plan that's been presented to us, a 30-day opening plan seems enough to me.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I don't see a need for-
I would say we would be happy to come back at 90 days for, if nothing else, the exercise for information for everyone. But then also, we have 30 days is our opening day plan. We have 30 days past that where we're gauging our presence in, in conjunction to All About Children and John Moran, where we'll have an extended time potentially of a police detail. And then 30 days after that, where we're functioning as we will on a regular basis from then out. So if we were to do it, I would suggest it would be 90 days for those three reflections.
So you go through your 30-day opening plan, you would come before the board for a public hearing, where you would provide notices to abutters. We would have it on our agenda. We would review- We would have it on our agenda. We would review how your opening plan went in the first thirty days and whatever happened since. I'm just sort of talking. And then we would say that we approve either not having to come back for another meeting or we are requesting that you come back after another ninety days and somehow extend your opening day plan through that. And it's really what we're targeting here is what, your, it's your opening day plan that we're targeting. I mean, because that's, that's what this is.
Right.
That's a good point. And, and that's the process that you'd sort of be willing to go through?
Why not?
Well, if they're willing to do it.
It's becoming our second home.
Right.
Luckily, I live locally, so it's hard for me.
And it, it seems potentially burdensome, like overly burdensome, but that is kind of the program that we have right now. Again, like East Hampton's out in front of this entire thing. So, there is the opportunity to just have the look back.
Okay.
And then, and I think it's not-
We're game.
All right. So, let me, uh, thank you. And I think you brought up great points, Jeff. You, you really did. And thank you for, for helping us walk through that. Let me just make sure here that I have this, uh, special permit for retail. No. Okay. Any other questions?
The public that hasn't had a chance to speak?
In that case, I'm going to start the reading.
Read away. Big piece to fill.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know. Jesse did such a great job. All right. I'm going to start with the findings. Uh, this is a draft decision for Herbology Group for their special permit. Colloquy, uh, co-located medical marijuana treatment center and adult-use cannabis retailer establishment. Finding number one, conformance with the provisions of the ordinance of the City of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable laws and regulations of state and federal agencies. The planning board's finding is that the applicant has received a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission and the use is contingent upon the applicant securing final licensure prior to commencing operations. The board finds that based on the city attorney's letter dated January seventh, two thousand nineteen, that the application reasonably fulfills the applicable state laws and local state and federal regulations and that the board may issue Herbology a special permit despite the need to cross USPS property. Touching that issue there. Number two is about the protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site.
This one needs a little work.
All right. The, the finding as it stands is in support of the city's-
It's, this is a copy and paste issue.
It's that bad?
Yeah, this one is.
Don't even say that one's that bad.
Do you want to, do, so I can at least get what the intent is. We're talking about the protection of city amenities, detrimental uses and offensive, and we've got, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it's, I think, if I can jump in a little bit, so I think it, if, um, for high level, it's the, the additional security measures that were put in place specifically the, uh, you know, the flagpole camera was one of the specific-
Protection of abutting property. So, it's the camera for, additional camera work for the All About Children. It's-
Lighting.
It's, um, yeah, it's lighting. It's, it's, it's traffic, um, uh, traffic reorganization for the abut, abutter. I've already forgotten the name of the business, but they've restripped and made his-
Overlook Industries.
Overlook Industries.
So, there's abutting property improvements there.
So, we're going to call out the security features in that lineup?
Yes. The security features. And I think the other element I think is important to have incorporated here, if not somewhere else, is the, so you mentioned the offsite improvements for the entrance reorganization of overlooking. I think it's the additional fencing and shrubbery around the playground.
Yes.
Which was intended to mitigate any potential impacts, you know, to, to that adjacent property. So, I think that's where this, that's where the board had the ability to talk, talk through this.
Okay. So, we better, we better make sure that gets in there. There, there is a document-
I'm sorry, is there also, since the storage unit is also an abutter, is it also the, the new gate security system for the, for the-
Yep.
Storage unit?
Which, I just want to, I don't think we're providing the gate. I think we're providing the funds for the gate.
Up to five thousand dollars.
Up to five thousand dollars for-
So, you'll do your own gate with the funds? Is that, okay.
I think the additional provision of police details on Industrial Parkway, that's, that's here to mitigate the potential-
It does, minimizing a butter property impact.
So, we talked about the fact that these items were actually listed in the plan except for the funds. So, we need to note the funds in that. I don't know if it goes in a finding or a condition later. These are just the findings. Do we just hold place, note the security, note the butter modifications, and be more specific in the, in the, um-
Yeah. So, I think it'll note that the fund, the funds for the installation of the gate on the adjacent property, and then the rest is already kind of articulated elsewhere. So, yeah. So, the finding is just noting the things that contribute to this.
So, we'll put it in the conditions. Okay.
So, I think we have that covered, right?
Okay.
In that case, number three, minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways and roads and maximizes the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. The proposal does not affect any unique natural or scenic features. The planning board finds that the applicant, why, why does it say the, a proposal does not affect any? Is that part of the language of the, of the zoning that looks oddly placed?
I think it's a combined, so it's in italics on this document, and so it's asking the board to make two findings.
Got it.
First one and then the second one.
So, you put them for both?
Yeah.
The planning board finds that the applicant has provided a range of mitigation measures on and off-site to minimize impacts to surrounding properties. In particular, the site contains parking spaces in excess of the minimum required for the proposed cannabis establishment, the entrance and exit to the property, as well as to the adjacent property at, what's the address?
The address of Overlook Industries is-
One ninety-three North Hampton. Will be upgraded to provide clearer points of entry and exit. The project reduces the potential for pedestrian access from Industrial Parkway through the use of relocated vehicular entrances and fencing. The opening day plan includes provisions for parking, attendance to direct patron parking to the use and the use of paid police details on and off-site. Number four, adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water, inadequate means of protecting wetlands, watersheds, aquifers, and well areas. The site improvements will result in a significant decrease in the amount of impervious services on-site. The construction activities shall be conducted in accordance with a submitted stormwater pollution prevention control plan. The applicant has provided responses to initial concerns by the city engineer, and the planning board has issued the necessary stormwater management permit pursuant to Article twelve of the city ordinance as part of the special permit.
I would just get rid of the word initial because they've responded to all the concerns of the city engineer at this point.
Agreed. You got that?
Yes. And there is just a, when we get down to it, we'll have to dig into Article twelve for a minute and have you issue that special permit.
All right.
I, I have a plan, but we'll cross that bridge from the wow.
Number five, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution system, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection in streets. The planning board finds that no information has been submitted regarding any negative impacts to any of the city's resources listed under this provision. Number six, provisions for the off-street loading and on, and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. The planning board found that while the number of parking spaces greatly exceeds the requirements for cannabis sales and cultivation, the potential additional use of the remainder of the building will occupy some of that excess parking. Should an additional special permit be sought for additional uses, the applicant shall provide an updated parking analysis for the cumulative use on the site. Number seven, applicant's efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and retention of open space and agricultural land. The applicant has provided significant onsite landscaping areas, including around the perimeter of the property, as shown on the submitted landscape plan sheet C two, last revised January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The applicant has also provided offsite landscaping improvements on the All About Children site pursuant to the submitted plan sheet C five, last revised January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, which seeks to mitigate the potential visual impact of the proposed use.
Yep.
While cited, Jeff. Number eight, minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed. Where tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees. The planning board finds that the site contains a vacant area adjacent to Industrial Parkway that is not disturbed. The remainder of the site is largely paved, I should say largely, as opposed to lagerly or larg- largerly. Paved and previously used for commercial purposes, and the proposed area adds, switch those. And what, and the proposed adds area of landscaping within the site?
Adds landscaping, yes.
And the proposal adds lan-
The proposal area adds landscaping.
Yeah, I would switch those words, area and adds, except and get rid of of.
Yeah, get rid of of.
Get rid of of. So, that should say, and the proposal area adds landscaping within the site. Number nine, the consistency of the development with respect to setback area, placement of parking, architectural style, and-
I understand what he was trying to say.
And landscaping.
The proposal adds area of landscaping.
Yeah.
So, I get it.
Is that what it was?
It's okay. It's actually okay the way it was written. It just was weird.
That's fine. Leave it then. I'm going to start up again on number nine. The consistency of the development with respect to setback area, placement of parking, architectural style, and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and development. The planning board finds that the demolition of one of the two existing buildings on the property and the reuse and renovation of the other building is consistent with the location of the property in the highway business and industrial zoning districts. Number ten, adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation and to minimize changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff and potential for flooding. The project has been reviewed by the city engineer and will be conditioned to be constructed and maintained in accordance with the SWIPP dated January two, two thousand nineteen stormwater management permit approved as part of the special permit.
Stop. Uh, it's SWPPP, not IPP.
Thanks.
Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan.
Thank you.
Pollution Protection.
Number eleven, ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. The planning board finds that the odor mitigation plan and operation and maintenance plan dated January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, associated floor plan dated July eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, equipment specifications from the dynamic air quality solutions is adequate. That should be and, equipment specifications. A condition of the permit requires that no odors associated with the use shall violate the provisions of MGL Chapter one eleven, Section thirty-one C. And that's good. It's in there.
That's all in there for this. Okay.
All right. Then we switch to, this says medical marijuana, but that should say recreational marijuana.
Is it recreational or adult use in there?
Adult use. Thank you. Adult use. All right. So, going through those. Number one, no cannabis establishment shall be located within three hundred and fifty feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any of grades one through twelve in operation at the time of application for a special permit or site plan approval. Distance shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the proper line, in question, to the nearest point of the property line where the marijuana establishment is or will be located. In any case where the measurement is determined to be in question, the planning board may require verification of distances by a registered land surveyor. The planning board found that although All About Children is a licensed daycare facility in close proximity to the subject property, it is not a school as defined in Section ten ten or CMR nine three five five hundred one ten three. A cannabis, number two, a cannabis establishment is permitted by special permit in highway business, downtown business, mixed-use mill-industrial and industrial zoning districts. Refer to Table five point, uh, five dash one, East Hampton Table of Use Regulations. In the highway business and downtown business, any cannabis establishment other than retail must be located within an existing building and comply with the requirements of Section ten point five of the zoning ordinance. The establishment is located on a property situated in both the highway business and industrial zoning district where the use is allowed with a special permit. That seems fairly straightforward. Number three, except in the mill-industrial and downtown business districts, no cannabis establishment shall be located within a building containing residential units containing residential units, including transient housing and group housing. The property does not contain any buildings with residential dwelling units. You don't have any plans of putting any residential units in there? Great. Number four, no more than six cannabis retailers shall be allowed within the city. Special permit applications will be considered in the order in which the planning department receives a completed special permit application and confirmation that a completed license application has been received by the commission. There are two requirements within this section. This application represents the second retail special permit granted in the city.
It's the third.
Third?
As of, as of twenty minutes ago.
Oh, that's right. That is a few moments ago. Okay. Third, modify that to, this represents the third retail special permit presumed granted in the city. The applicant has achieved both a complete application and a provisional license within the Cannabis Control Commission as identified in CMR nine three five five hundred one oh two. Number five, no cannabis retailer should be located within two hundred feet of another cannabis retailer except within the mill-industrial zone. Distance shall be measured by a straight line from the nearest point of the property line in question to the nearest point of the property line where the marijuana establishment is or will be located. There are no other cannabis retail establishments within two hundred feet of the subject property. Number six, no cannabis shall be smoked, eaten, or otherwise consumed or ingested on the premises, except as may be allowed in a cannabis membership club. All cannabis establishments permitted under this section so comply with all state and local laws, rules and regulations governing the smoking of tobacco. The proposal does not consider nor allow consumption of cannabis on the premises. The proposal provides specific security measures intended to prevent any consumption of cannabis anywhere on the subject property. Seems fair. Number seven, odor. No, no cannabis establishment shall allow the escape of noxious odors or gases. They shall incorporate odor control technology and provisions and ensure that emissions do not violate MGL Chapter one eleven, Section thirty-one C. The applicant has provided an odor mitigation plan and operation and maintenance plan dated January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, associated floor plan dated July eleventh, two thousand eighteen, and equipment specifications from dynamic air quality solutions. A condition of the permit requires that no odors associated with the use shall violate the provisions of MGL Chapter one eleven, Section thirty-one C. Number eight, signage. All signage shall comply with the requirements of nine three five CMR five hundred and Section ten point zero of this zoning ordinance. The board should include a condition that all signs comply with Section ten point zero of the zoning ordinance. All right. We'll have to look at that. But that no directional sign shall be placed in such a way to obstruction, obstruct the line of sight for drivers of vehicles entering or exiting the property. The sign complies with the provisions of nine three five CMR in that it does not contain any logos or designs that resemble marijuana. Right? To the extent feasible, the applicant will consult with the DPW and/or city council on the potential installation of no parking signs as well as potential new speed limit signs on Industrial Parkway. Hours of operation, and we'll modify this here. Cannabis retailers shall be open to the public no earlier than ten AM and no later than eleven PM. As presented, the applicant, a condition of the special permit limits the hours of operation to ten to eight we had here, but now you've changed that to ten to ten. Seven days per week. The hours of operation apply only to retail sales open to the public and are not intended to restrict other employees or operations. So, we agree ten to ten. Number ten, visual impact. Cannabis plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building in which the cannabis establishment is located and shall comply with the requirements of nine three five CMR five hundred. No outdoor storage is permitted. Any artificial screening device erected to eliminate the view from the public shall also be subject to a vegetative screen, and the board shall consider the surrounding landscape and view shed to determine if an artificial screen would be out of character with the neighborhood. The proposal contains a retail dispensary where the interior of the premises will not be visible from the parking area. Additionally, no aspect of the cultivation operation will be visible. Home occupation doesn't apply here. Community host agreement, no special permit shall be granted without first having an executive, execute, excuse me, community host agreement with the City of East Hampton. The applicant has executed a community host agreement with the City of East Hampton as required under CMR nine three five five hundred one oh one B six and has submitted the certification form to the Cannabis Control Commission. Number thirteen, community outreach meeting. No special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until a community outreach meeting in accordance with nine three five CMR five hundred has occurred. The applicant has held a community outreach meeting as required under CMR nine three five five hundred one oh one and has submitted approved form to the Cannabis Control Commission. State law, number fourteen, cannabis establishment operations shall conform at all times to general laws, Chapter ninety-four G, and regulations issued thereunder. The planning board conditioned a special permit on continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. It's mandatory. Number fifteen, license requirements. The applicant shall submit proof that the application to the CCC has been deemed complete pursuant to nine three five CMR five hundred one oh two. Copies of the complete application, to the extent legally allowed, shall be provided as integral component, as an integral component to the, or of the application to the planning board, and no special permit application shall be deemed complete by the planning department until this information is provided. The applicant has provided proof of a complete application by the Cannabis Control Commission. No special permit shall be granted by the planning board to an applicant without the cannabis establishment first having been issued a provisional license from the commission pursuant to nine three five CMR five hundred. The applicant has provided a copy of the provisional license dated December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, for retail sales. No establishment without having a license in good standing from the commission. The applicant will require a final license from the CCC prior to operation. All local review and approvals will be required to be completed prior to opening. Number sixteen, energy use. All cannabis cultivators shall submit an energy use plan to the planning board to demonstrate best practices for energy conservation. The plan shall include an electrical system overview, proposed energy demand, ventilation system and air quality, proposed water system and utility demand. The planning board finds that based on the submitted energy use plan prepared by Fuss and O'Neil and the issuance of the provisional license from the CCC, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the provision and the provisions of CMR nine three five five hundred. Is there an additional subsection that you want to add there?
I would like to dig it up, but it could be sufficient just to say the five hundred. I mean, there's a section of CMRs that require the energy plan to begin with, so I will insert that.
You'll see if you can insert it. Okay. Line queue plan, number seventeen, the applicant should submit a line queue plan to ensure that the movement of pedestrian and/or vehicle traffic along the public right-of-way will not be unreasonably obstructed. The planning board finds the opening day plan provides adequate measures to control pedestrian and vehicular movement within the site, including but not limited to provisions for- for appointment-only retail sales for the first month of operation and will employ parking lot attendance as needed. In addition, the applicant has agreed to pay for a police traffic detail in industrial parkway on an as-needed basis during the first 60 days of operation to aid in monitoring activity off-site in proximity to the daycare facility. A condition of the special permit requires the applicant review the adequacy of the opening day plan at a public meeting. Said meetings shall include notice to abouters mailed by the applicant in accordance with Chapter 40R, Section 9. And we'll be making that more specific when we get to the conditions at the end.
Yep.
Number 18, traffic impact statement. Any cannabis establishment open to the general public shall submit a detailed traffic impact statement in accordance with Section 7.4104. A traffic impact statement prepared by the Hays Engineering, prepared by Hays Engineering, excuse me, dated July 18th, 2018 was provided. The planning board finds in accordance with the statement that it is not anticipated that the minor increases in vehicul- vehicle trips and for the proposed use will adversely affect prevailing traffic conditions in the vicinity of the projects. The city engineer by email dated February 5th, 2019, supported the findings, given the reduction over what the existing use allows. The board also found that m- that minimize, minimum, minimum, traffic impacts.
Min- minimum.
Hold on, let me read what you said.
I think it's the board also found that the.
Two min- that it minimizes, it minimizes, minimizes traffic impacts and better, moderates patron activity?
Right.
The approved opening plan includes provisions for appointment-only for the first month of operations and additional measures thereafter. Uh, I think the intent there is clear, you just, a little bit of punctuation or whatever you can shift. Number 19, parking. Parking shall be in accordance with Section 10.1, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations in Table 10.3, Off-Street Parking Regulations. The proposal provides a total of, what was your number?
111.
111? I thought it was 103. Parking spaces in the property where the zoning ordinance requires.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, that's way more than we need. The board found that the demand for spaces may be greater during initial six months of operation, especially after sales are allowed without appointments. The planning board found that while the number of parking spaces greatly exceeds the requirements for cannabis sales and cultivation, the potential additional use of the remainder of the building, in your phase two, will occupy some of that excess parking. Should an additional special permit be sought for additional uses, the applicant shall provide an updated parking analysis for the cumulative, cumulative uses on the site. You understand?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty, waivers. The applicant shall be required to submit specific information regarding any waivers from 935-CMR-500 dot zero 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 granted by the commission. The planning board shall approve or disapprove said waivers based on the following commission criteria in 935-CMR-500. The planning board found that any waivers from the CCC should be reviewed and approved by the planning board during a public meeting. There are no waivers, is that what the deal? No?
No.
No waivers?
No.
Okay. Twenty-one, notice of enforcement order. Within 24 hours, a receipt of notice, a cannabis establishment shall file with the mayor, health agent, and the building commissioner any summary cease and desist order, cease and desist order, quarantine order, suspension order, revocation order, order limiting sales, deficiency statement, plan of correction, notice of hearing, notice of any other administrative process or legal action, denial of a license, denial of a renewal of a license, or final action issued by a state agency, including but not limited to the commission and Massachusetts Department of Public Health regarding the cannabis establishment, the Cannabis Control Commission license, or the Department of Public Health certification of registration. The decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by a state agency in accordance with Section 1010-712 of the zoning ordinance. Twenty-two, annual inspection. Any operating cannabis establishment within the city shall be inspected annually by the building inspector or their designee to ensure compliance with this section and with any conditions imposed by the planning board as a condition of the special permit approval. The decision includes a condition requiring that the applicant shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year. Said inspections should occur within a reasonable period of time of each anniversary of the first day of operation.
Well done. Now, for you a slight reprieve while I propose a way to make the findings for the stormwater management permit.
Go for it.
So separately, the city has a stormwater management permit requirement, so there's a criteria for review of them, and I believe that the proposed finding in essence is going to be that the stormwater pollution prevention plan satisfies all of these.
Okay.
So it says in addition to other criteria used by the permit agency in making the permit decisions for the uses specified in the ordinance, said permit agency must also find that the stormwater management plan submitted with the permit meets the following criteria. So there's only three, but I, and I wrote them into this, so I think I'm just looking for the affirmative finding. The stormwater management plan is consistent with the purposes and objectives of Section 12 dash 76.
Yes.
Which is around stormwater management. The stormwater management plan meets the performance standards described in Section 12 dash 81, which it, by the submission, it does.
Does.
And then the storm margin, stormwater management plan meets the design requirements of Section 12 dash 81, so.
Is that all one-line item for stormwater, like finding twenty-three?
Three, three proposed.
Three separate ones?
Yeah, findings that.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
Based on the city engineer's concurrence that the stormwater pollution prevention plan satisfies all those.
Right.
So that's incorporated into the permit.
Awesome.
Okay.
It's just, uh, conditions time.
What, is that a condition or is that?
Those were findings, right?
Um, I believe that I do propose that there is a, there is an associated condition, I can't remember if I wrote this after I printed that, so there'll be a condition to support that.
Okay. What we have right now is, I'll start with the seven that I have here, eight, 10 conditions that I have here. Number one, all exterior onsite and offsite improvements shall be constructed and maintained substantially in accordance with the approved plans and shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. In any event, that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certi- certificate of occupancy, an alternative schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at a public meeting.
Does that relate to the planning plan or is that?
And does that, do we, I'm trying to see, I know there's a phase one and a phase two, and I want to clearly delineate that phase two is not included in the site plan. I believe that covers it in number one. Am I wrong? Do we need a special line item for that?
Well, from my understanding, all the site improvements shown on the proof plans will be implemented as part of phase one.
Phase one.
Except for, you know, the interior build-out of the building or changes to the building in the future.
Okay, so that would cover it then?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so if anything else, a phase two happens, they just have to come before, since change of use.
Separate site plan. I'll have to read it again.
And then, I had a note, um, which would be that this condition, sorry, I'm just, condition includes the provisions outlined, identified in the February 1st letter, um, which must also be completed prior to the issuance of a CO, so that's.
Restate that, please.
So trying to get to that this condition that we just talked about, so prior to certificate of occupancy, this condition includes the provisions identified by the applicant in the, I, it's wordsmithing, but identified in the February 1st letter. I'm trying to suggest that the items in the February 1st letter have to be also completed by the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so, so you're saying what we need is a condition to include the language about All About Children's modifications, the overlook industry modifications? Now, we know that stuff is on, is in the plan, so it's in there. The only part of it that's not in there is the money part, the $20,000 and how all that's going to be handled.
And the, yes, the money part, yes.
Well, yeah, yep. Let's save that, I'll read through the ones you've got, and I, I do have that on my list for something that we need to, that and the 20-day opening, so 20K and 20-day opening. So I'll go to the next one for now. Uh, number two, the cannabis establishment shall not create a nuisance situation pursuant to the definition of nuisance under Section 10.10-5.7 of the zoning ordinance. That seems very straightforward. Three, the special permit associated with the use is contingent upon continuous licensure by the Cannabis Control Commission. Also obvious. Number four, the hours of operation of the retail dispensary shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Change that from eight to 10:00 p.m., seven days per week.
Ten to ten.
Ten to ten. Uh, number five, the cannabis establishment shall operate in accordance with an approved operating plan, opening plan for the management of patrons, parking, and security. Initially, the use shall operate in accordance with a plan approved on February 5th, 2019, including for the first month of operation as proposed by the applicant. Retail sales operations shall be by, by appointment-only for the first month of operation, police details onsite and on industrial parkway as needed and determined by the police chief. Said plan shall be reviewed by the planning board 90 days and 180 days after, which a final plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board for operations thereafter. Look, we just came up with good language for this in the other one, can we copy and paste?
Yep.
And just make the 90 days?
Yep. No, we don't need the 180 days.
Yeah, we get rid of the 180. Okay, so I think we're good there. Number six, the use shall not allow the escape of noxious odors or gases, shall incorporate proper odor control technology and provisions to ensure emissions do not violate MGL Chapter 111, Section 31(c). Continuous violations of this condition may also result in enforcement under Section 12.4 of the zoning ordinance, and this is where you wanted that note about the health agent?
Right, and it specifically is that the odor mitigation maintenance plan, or the odor mitigation. Sorry, it's, it's way more difficult to do this on the spot. So the document submitted shows the odor control maintenance plan, which is what I think is really important.
Yeah.
So the odor control maintenance plan, um, dated January 15th, 2019, shall be reviewed. It's, it's more strict compliance, it's, I think we're seeking strict compliance with that.
Strict compliance, that said plan shall be maintained. How's that sound?
Yep. The applicant will.
So you'll fill in the, whatever.
With the plan dated X.
The section was that you had there? Does that sound reasonable? I know I didn't name the section that we're asking strict compliance to be held for, but it's relating to what?
As regulated by the Board of Health. Right, and I think that's what, that's what the reference to MGL Chapter 111 gives the health agent that authority, so it's just giving her, he or she that authority to get into this plan and implement it.
Okay.
If it's necessary, okay.
That's the intent, we need to make sure that language comes out very close to sort of what we just said there. All right, number seven, any waivers granted by the Cannabis Control Commission associated with the operation shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board prior to implementation, except for any waiver granted for the sale of marijuana products tested by the Department of Public Health rather than the Cannabis Control Commission. Straightforward. Number eight, the applicant shall provide notice to the city of any enforcement order issued by a state agency in accordance with Section 1010-711 of the zoning ordinance, and shall coordinate and arrange an annual inspection with the building inspector each year from the date of opening in accordance with Section 1010-712. Number nine, the pre- and post-construction activities shall occur and be maintained in substantial accordance with the stormwater pollution prevention plan prepared by Hays Engineering dated January 2nd, 2019. Number 10, the special permit is granted for a retail and medical marijuana dispensary, cultivation facility, and associated offices. A separate special permit shall be required for any additional uses or renovations in the remainder of the building. Said special permit shall consider the overall use and operation of the property as it relates to parking and traffic. So there we lock in phase two.
Yep.
So I have two new conditions that I need to put in here, and one is about the 20K, the money component, and the other is about the 90-day opening, um, but I think we covered the 90-day opening in that other piece.
We got it too.
So I can strike that, and that just leaves making sure that what is said on page two of this document that you put out, where you said, following discussions with Ms. Pilgrim and All About Children, Urbology has agreed to commit $20,000 to cover both the above described improvements to the property as well as any other improvements that All About Children deems appropriate. Urbology estimates that it can perform the fencing and landscaping work described above for approximately $7,500 and then turn over the remainder of the 20 grand described to All About Children. Alternatively, Urbology will turn over the entire 20 grand to All About Children, perform the work itself, and utilize the funds as it deems appropriate. And it's the latter, I think, that is what you're targeting, is that what?
Either way.
It's your decision. Do you have a preference?
I'm sorry.
Take the 20 and run, or they build a fence and you get the rest?
I think I'll just, I, I mean, because it's my landlord, so if, I would probably have to take the.
Why don't we, why don't we leave it in where it's either or at this case, and you guys can work that out? You probably did a good job when you put it together that way. So the question is, how do we condition this?
So, uh, the, my first attempt would be, so it's going on condition number one. So condition number one again is all exterior onsite and offsite improvements prior to CO, um, with the caveat that if it falls in winter, and then it would be a sentence there, in addition. Can we just say, see the attached letter? Well, yeah, so in addition, yeah, so in addition, this condition requires compliance with the monetary agreement to AAC as offered by the applicant in the February 1st, 2019 letter, which must be.
So while I was talking, he was typing.
Which must be, so the word completed is what I have, but it must be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate, which transaction must be completed. There has to be some way to make sure that this happens before there.
Uh, how about just that? Must be completed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, so, right.
Is that amenable? Okay.
Without articulating the actual number, it's, there's a, clearly a document where the building inspector is gonna have to. We also, that's fine, we also talked about additionally, uh, $5,000, uh, which is not in this letter, to, um, the storage unit, what's the storage unit?
That's a good point.
Parkway storage?
Parkway storage. $5,000 to Parkway storage, um, for security improvements.
And also the overlook site improvements.
Right, well, the overlook site improvements are in the February 1st letter.
They're in the plan, yeah.
I, I don't have a copy of that updated plan.
Okay, it's in there.
Yep, and, uh, so is the, the February, yeah, and the February 1st letter you probably should get to, just to make sure you have it in writing, what, what is the plan for the overlook industries.
Right.
Jeff, are we near to a point where you can give us one last read-through of that? Do you need a few more moments?
Yeah, yep.